It's the order. Counsel, for purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting will be convened by electronic means as authorized under the order of Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General of the Province of B.C., Ministerial Order M 192. And as such, council members are participating by phone, and as Chair of this meeting, I am also participating by phone. Please note if my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting or any councillor's connection is lost, we will recess the meeting until my connection is restored. I have a note that councillor De Genova is participating by phone. So I will have to check periodically to make sure that we do have quorum. So just to give you a heads up, I'll be calling roll calls just to make sure we maintain quorum in this quasi judicial hearing. So if anybody loses connection during the process, I will have to suspend the process until somebody gets, until staff get folks back online. Please let the clerk know if you're leaving the meeting, and that makes it easier for all of us. The live stream, this meeting will have both audio and video. Video of committee members speaking, presentations, amendments and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can also listen to proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out on at Van City Clerk. Presentations, amendment and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on January 7th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. And therefore, speakers will be providing comments to council by phone, and moderator will assist in patching speakers through when the term comes up. So with that in mind, clerks, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weep.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly. We're still working. Oh, good. And councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. So of course, we acknowledge we're in the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam Squamish and Sleiput Tooth, and thank them for their generosity to all who live and work on these lands. Thanks a lot to staff for all your work as well. And before we begin, we have a few announcements. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merit of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter for updates so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments. And the link will be tweeted out. Finally, speakers who pre-registered with the presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. So just say the word next to flip your slides, and I'll help through that if need be. A reminder that the council's role of public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which is saved debate for after the close of speakers. And let's not try to wander too far down the policy track that sometimes distracts us. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the, in principle, the application, two, refuse the application, or three, defer the application for further consideration. So let's start with the first one, rezoning on 810 Kingsway. Does any council member wish to declare an interest, a conflict of interest on item one? And I'll just wait for a second. I don't hear any conflict calls, so I'm going to move to the clerk now to read the application and summary of correspondence. Staff and council, we do have one speaker registered for this, so we will be watching the presentation from staff. Please go ahead. Clerks.
This is an application by Rise Alliance Lands Limited to rezone 810 Kingsway from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building containing 108 secured market rental housing units and commercial spaces at grade. A height of 22 metres and a floor space ratio of 3.65 are proposed. The general manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Eight pieces of correspondence in support and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. And this represents all correspondence received up to 4:30pm today.
Thanks very much. If there's any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610. Participant code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list, and we'll be tweeting this number out, and it's available on the live stream. We have Jim Spillane, the planner from Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, on the phone to present the application. So thanks, Mr. Spillane, and please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezoning application which proposes to rezone 810 Kingsway under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. The site is located on the south side of Kingsway at the intersection of Prince Albert Street. It's currently zoned C2, which permits mixed-use development. Sites to the north and east are zoned C2, while the site shown in blue at 855 is an approved CD1 that is yet to be enacted. Sites to the south across the rear lane are zoned RS1, while the land to the west of the site is zoned RT2. This image shows an aerial view of the site facing north. This site is approximately 2,305 square metres in size, and the width of the road in this location is approximately 100 foot. This image is taken facing south. The site is currently occupied by a commercial building with an at-grade car park at the site. Frontage. This area has a range of local amenities, shops and services. It includes bus route number 19 between Metro Town and Stanley Park, and a range of local bike routes. There are four elementary schools located within a kilometre of the site. The Vancouver School Board enrollment numbers indicate that enrollment vacancies currently exist at two of these schools. There are five group childcares and four parks located within 800 metres of the site. This proposal has been assessed under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. On November 26, 2019, council approved amendments to this policy and renamed it the Secured Rental Policy. As the applicant received a supportive response to their rezoning inquiry before this date, the proposal is being assessed under the original Secured Market Rental Housing Policy. This application proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story building with 108 secured market rental units and commercial spaces at grade. The maximum height of the proposal is 22 metres with a floor space ratio of 3.65. The unit mix includes 32 bedroom and eight three-bedroom, which achieves the family unit mix of 35% as required by the family room housing mix policy. This application was received in March 2020. Shown here are some alternate views of the proposal. The image at the top shows how the building massing has been broken down along the street. Frontage, while the image at the bottom shows how the upper floors have been stepped back from the rear to reduce the impact on homes to the south. A row of townhouses has been located along the rear lane, which provides larger homes and provide an active edge along the laneway. As part of Restart Smart Vancouver, in response to the pandemic, the proposal will create approximately 378 new onsite and offsite jobs during the recovery phase. The applicant will not seek the DCL waiver at the rezoning stage. However, this slide has been included to show the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side in the blue column and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership, shown on the right-hand side in the red column. A pre-application open house was held in October 2019 and was attended by one person. Following submission of the rezoning application, a virtual open house was held from July 6th to July 26th of 2020. During the three-week open house, there were 272 views of the page with 101 of those downloading files. There were 12 engaged individuals who submitted comments or questions. Key themes of support included the location of this project. Key themes of concern included the building height and massing. In reviewing the application, staff have determined that the proposed height, massing and mix of use are an appropriate response for this site. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone the site from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Rental 100 program. If approved, the application would provide 108 new secured market rental units and contribute to the rental targets outlined within Housing Vancouver. Thank you. The applicant team would now like to provide a short presentation.
Great. Thank you so much for that, and we do have the applicant team here. If you want to just introduce yourselves and proceed with your presentation, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks very much, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and council. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, and we can see your presentation.
Okay, excellent. So my name is Lucas Barabee. I'm the Director of Development at Rise, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the applicant team this evening. The last time I addressed council, albeit in person, in different times, was on October 1st, 2019, at the public hearing for 3429 to 3469 Fraser Street, which was Rise's first rental project in the city of Vancouver. No worries if you don't remember that specific project. It seems like a very long time ago now, and you've seen many rental projects since, and we've all experienced pretty drastic changes in our day-to-day. However, one thing that's remained constant is Vancouver's need for a purpose-built rental, and I'm really happy to report that we broke ground on our Fraser Street project back in December and are slated for occupancy in late 2022. As another follow-up to that public hearing, at that time councillor Swanson asked what it would take for us to provide some units at below-market rents. And I responded that it would take significantly low construction costs or senior government subsidies. And while we unfortunately haven't seen any decrease in construction costs, in fact, we continue to see costs escalate, I am happy to report back that we qualified for financing from a senior government agency, which will enable us to provide over 40% of the units in that project at below-market rates. So generally, Rise sees an opportunity in Vancouver to imagine what rental could be. We want to elevate the offering of our rental projects while being clear that we are not providing a luxury product. Our goal is to deviate from the norm and ultimately provide something that's better than owning. Homes in architecturally distinct buildings with curated local retail at grade that offer opportunities for connection and community. Slide, please. So to that end, we launched homesnotforsale.com in late 2020, an interactive collaborative survey designed to engage the broader community and understand the needs and wants of renters in both the city and the broader metro area. If you have a few minutes, I'd encourage you to check it out once again at homesnotforsale.com. So anyway, on to the current item, 810 Kingsway. This rezoning application is a product of many months of work with staff and of course, our design team. And the resultant building is one that we're very proud of. The height of the commercial level along Kingsway and the grade change from Kingsway to the lane has enabled us to propose five two-level townhomes, which will serve to activate the lane, provide ground-oriented family housing and transition the building to a mass that responds to the adjacency of family homes. Consistent with Rise's rental principles, the commercial units have been intentionally designed as spaces that will be attractive to smaller independent tenants. The commercial unit at the corner of Kingsway and Prince Albert has been designed with a restaurant or cafe tenant in mind, offering patio seating and a connection to the publicly accessible plaza on the corner. We'll continue to target local independent tenants and work with consultants intimately familiar with the local retail and restaurant community to better understand the requirements and ultimately help them lease space in the building. If approved, this rezoning application will bring 108 new rental homes and at-grade commercial to an underutilized site in Kensington Cedar Cottage without displacing any current tenants, or I should say current residential tenants. Thanks so much for your time tonight and your consideration of this proposal.
Thanks so much for that presentation. And I'll just ask, does council have any questions now for the staff or the applicant? And this is the first time, this is the only time you get to ask questions of the applicant. So get him in now if you'd want. I've got councillor Carr on the list for up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation. I do have some questions for the applicant. So my first question is, I was interested to hear you say that you did qualify for senior government funding, enabling you to provide 40% of the units at below-market rates. Do you have an estimation right now at sort of what percentage below-market rates you're kind of thinking of or aiming for?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll sort of preface this by saying, unfortunately, I need to be a little bit careful with my words because I'm not really legally allowed to go into the details of that at this time. And I really wish I could because it's a great news story, but unfortunately I can't. But I'll do my best to answer the question. So just a quick point of clarification, it's not senior government funding, but senior government financing that we qualify for. And in direct response to your question, it's around 70% of market rents that we'll be able to provide with this financing.
That's great. And yes, that's 40%. Okay, that's good. Can you just explain to me the goals you're searching for around the carbon emissions and sustainability?
Yeah, I mean, we, as a rezoning, will be obligated to comply with the green buildings policy in the city of Vancouver, which, as I'm sure you're aware, is quite a stringent policy and will of course, regulate our sustainability and carbon emissions through that.
Okay, so the green, you're not aiming for like passive health standard, but basically complying with the green building policy. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. It'll be path B of the green buildings policy, the low emissions.
Yes, great. Okay, thanks so much.
Great, thanks very much councillor Carr. Next question's councillor Swanson. Go ahead, up to five.
Thank you. I think these are for the applicant too. So you're getting senior government financing, and that's going to enable 40% of the units to be at about 70% of market. Is that what you're saying?
So I just want to be, I want to be very clear, and I apologize if I wasn't. That, the comment that I made was specific to our project at 3429 to 3469 Fraser Street. And I was sort of going back to a question that you had asked me at that time to provide a follow-up to that. For the project being under consideration right now at 810 Kingsway, we're too early in the process to make any commitment in that regard.
So the thing about 40% at less than market is for the other project, it's not for this one?
That's correct.
And are you anticipating that you'll seek senior government financing for this one?
Yeah, we'll certainly exhaust all avenues that make sense for the project and will enable us to provide a higher level of affordability.
So if the rents were 70% of market, what would they be for, say, a one-bedroom?
Sorry, I'm just doing some quick math. Bear with me.
And I don't have to, thank you.
That would be, you know, this, again, this is sort of quick math, but it would be around $1,300 for a studio apartment.
Okay, and are you going to be seeking a DCL waiver?
No, not at this time.
If you get the senior government financing, and they have a condition, is it that you have to have X percent at below-market? Is that a condition of their financing?
Under certain programs, yes.
And for how long does the rent have to be at a certain percent below-market? 10 years, 20 years, forever?
Again, I'm just sort of choosing my words carefully to try not to give too much away again, and that's a legal obligation. I wish I could go into more detail, but it's in the neighbourhood of 20 years.
Okay, so my vote on this would be a lot easier if I knew that it was, that you were going to have 40% of the units at 70% of market. But you can't say.
No, unfortunately not.
Is there any attempt to make some of the retail units below-market? I was looking around in the area, and it looks like most of the retail units probably don't have owners or renters who have a lot of dough.
Yeah, at this time, we're not making any commitment to provide any of the retail units at below-market rate. But we're going to, like I said in my presentation, continue working with people very familiar with the local retail scene in order to target local independent retailers and potentially work out structures that will allow them to lease the space. Because we think that, you know, that symbiotic relationship of having local independence is important for the character of the building, serves the residential tenants. But to be clear, we're not making any commitment to provide below-market retail rents at this time.
So if you think you're going to get government financing and have low rents, why wouldn't you apply for a DCL waiver? Seems like you could save a bunch of money.
Yeah, so again, we, we're too early in the process. We have no commitment from senior government, so we need to maintain flexibility for the project. And just with regard, to speak frankly, with regard to the DCL waiver, you know, we're still three years away at best from occupying the project. And in a continued climate of escalating hard costs, it doesn't make sense to fix our revenue when we have no control over costs for the next 36 months.
And we're at the five-minute mark, so thank you councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick, up to five.
Thank you. My questions are for staff.
Okay, you can ask them now or ask them after we hear from them.
I'd like to ask them now. I just like clarification. So we've got 108 market rental units under Rental 100. And could you just remind me again, when this Rental 100 application was made, you stated it was being grandfathered?
And so the applicant received a supportive response to their inquiry before the November 26 due date of 2019.
Okay, great.
As a result, that's why it's been assessed under the previous policy.
Just, like just.
Sorry, I was just looking for the date. Thank you. So my question is this, is there a firm commitment to sticking to this application? Or in the future, is it possible for a rezoning to MRRP, for example? We've seen this happen in other applications, and we just heard from the applicant that it's probably three years out. So is there a chance that this will change from being under Rental 100 to, well, is there a firm commitment to sticking to this application?
Hi, council, it's Yarla McNeil, Assistant Director Planning for Rezoning. If the applicant chose to change the project to below-market rental rates, they could do that of their own volition, but if they wanted to come in under the MRRP program that would allow them more heightened density, they would have to reapply with a separate rezoning application and a separate public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you very much. My next question is about schools. It was stated in the presentation that there was capacity. I understand that the closest school, which is Charles Dickens, is over-capacity. Could you elaborate, please, on the situation with the schools?
Yeah, sure. So there's four schools located within a kilometre of the site. And you're correct in that the closest school was at 103% of capacity in 2020, and that's expected to continue through to 2027. There are two other schools, Florence Nightingale and Queen Alexandra, that are nearby the site, and they're both approximately half full for 2020, and that's expected to continue through to 2027.
Okay, so that, you don't see that as a concern?
No, not at this stage. And there's two schools there that are both within one kilometre of the site, and they both have capacity expected through in the next six years.
I guess if you don't have to walk a kilometre to school. Let's talk about parking. There's 99 parking spaces for 108 market rental units. Can you describe your thinking behind this parking allocation?
So the provision of car parking for this site does meet the car parking bylaw. How many applicants are required to provide more than that?
Okay, so it's just strictly by policy. My final question is, on page six, it refers again, the report refers to the Housing Vancouver Strategy and its 72,000 new units. In that we are hopefully going through a process of recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy. When do you expect, are you going to continue to put this reference into every one of these rezoning application presentation reports going forward?
Thank you, council, for the question. To date, that is an adopted policy, and as it changes, we will amend our rezoning reports accordingly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and we're on to councillor Bly for up to five.
Thanks very much. I have an echo.
I can't hear an echo, so it must be on your end.
Just try and fix it.
Do you want to, there's other speakers on the list.
I'm not sure if you can hear me still, Mayor.
I can hear you, but I'm going to take you off the list and just put you at the bottom, and we'll go to councillor Weep. Councillor Weep with questions?
That sounds great.
I've got two questions. The first one is, in the conditions, one of the ones talks about the amenity space and maybe taking over the single bedroom unit next door to increase amenity space for a building of this size to increase livability. I'm just wondering what the conversations have been on that and what do you feel as you move forward in the next phase of this project, you can make an amenity space that makes the building more livable? Just to the proponent.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Weep, I wasn't sure whether that was to staff or the proponent. Yeah, so we're, we're currently working with staff to enlarge that amenity space to an appropriate size for this building. So we're looking at a couple of different options, whether that involves taking over the adjacent unit and providing that as amenity, or whether that involves providing amenity over the light well that's currently located to the west of, of that. We're, we're exploring both options. And we're also increasing the outdoor amenity space by pushing back the, the planters to the, to the, the north, closer to the, the, I guess, the role of one, one in, in studios along that second level.
Okay, and then another one of the conditions talks about plantings and maybe utilizing the roof as a green roof or other opportunities to enable integrated rain-water management. So I'm wondering what conversations you've had and where you're hoping that the building will end up in that realm.
Yeah, so we, we won't be pursuing a green roof. However, one of the conditions states to explore leaving the area below the corner plaza unexcavated in order to allow for more rainwater infiltration and potentially provide a tree on native soil. And we're currently examining reconfiguring the parcade in order to provide that on the corner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Councillor Weep.
Thank you. We've got Councillor Dejanova next for up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. Just a couple of questions on affordability, follow-up to Councillor Swanson's question. And in regards to the funding that you are seeking, is that specifically through the Rapid Housing Initiative? The federal government? Can you elaborate on which program you're utilizing?
I mean, there's, there's several buckets of, of financing available through both CMHC and BC Housing. And kind of at this stage of, of the process in, under rezoning, we're, we're kind of looking at all options. And again, I, I kind of wish I could go into, into more detail upon, on what we qualified for on the, on the previous project and kind of the avenue that we would, we would seek on, on this one, but.
Well, I'm not asking what you qualified for on the previous project. I was just wondering if, if you might be able to, my next question to you was going to be after you'd, you'd shared, if you could share which programs you had applied to, if this was one of the reasons why you were unsure about, for instance, if you were to right now apply for a DCL waiver or say that that was something that you were signaling that you would want to do and that precluded you from a contribution, if those were some of the reasons as to why you, you may be hesitant to, to consider making those final decisions at this point when you don't have to. Whereas some of the applicants that we see do make those decisions earlier on.
Yeah, no, sorry, I misunderstood the original question. And yeah, if I, if I understand correctly, I think we're, yeah, at this point, we're, we're trying to maintain flexibility both with regard to the DCL waiver, which I understand that we have the ability to kind of reexamine at, at TP prior to. Although right now, is to not take that and maintain flexibility. And we'll sort of look at all, all avenues at this time for, for senior government financing.
Okay, thanks. I think I heard most of what you were saying. There was a little coughing in there, but I'm, I'm not sure with you. I'm, I'm just wondering, would, so, so basically, the reason that you're not able to, to share this with us, just to be very clear, is that you want to maximize the affordability and your ability to secure that funding from senior levels of government via BC Housing or CMHC? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Great, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that and appreciate you answering my question.
Thanks so much. Councillor Curby Young, up to five.
I will be very quick. One question I didn't see noted in the presentation, pet-friendly or not pet-friendly?
It'll be pet-friendly.
So hundred percent of the unit?
That's, that's correct. It, the kind of pet, pet-friendly environment is consistent with kind of our overall rental philosophy and, and principles. And so, yes, a hundred percent of the building will be pet-friendly.
Okay, and any other detail or info you can provide on amenity, on the amenity space? For us?
Yeah, so like I answered with, with Councillor, we were, we're sort of looking to, to maximize the level to amenity in accordance with, with rezoning conditions. And, you know, the, the outdoor amenity, given kind of the, the current climate, we're, we're looking to enlarge that as well, essentially by, by pushing the planters towards the patios and kind of reclaiming the majority of that, the, the second level outdoor space for common use with things like barbecue area, child's play, et cetera.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll leave it there.
Thanks. Councillor Bly, up to five. Is it going? Can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Sorry, still can't hear you. Your mute light has just come on, though. Can you try to? There, it's off now. Nope. Is it, if it, is it for the applicant or for staff? If it's for the applicant, blink twice. We're going to have to get tech to help. There is, there is a chance to ask the staff questions later in the process. Not sure what to tell you here. Okay, I was going to remote in just to try to, to help you with questions. Just checking with the clerk here. Perhaps you could phone in? Or if you want to use the chat function, I could ask your question for you. Just one second, Council. I think there's some typing happening here. I think the, the tech is trying to get into your computer, Councillor Bly. Ah, texted me. Okay.
Mayor Stewart, it is, it is the clerk here. Our IT, if Councillor Bly can hear us, our IT is suggesting if she could unplug her headset and plug it back in again, that might correct the problem.
She's tried that, but we'll give it a go. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Dejanova, could I propose a five-minute recess? Would that be helpful?
Sure, we're not really supposed to, but I guess we could just do yays and nays. All in favor of a five-minute recess, say yay.
Mayor, can you hear me?
We can.
Wow.
Okay.
I was trying desperately to say, please move on and emailing and texting everyone I could think of, but I couldn't access my computer to use the chat because IT is in the computer, yeah.
I understand. Okay, but you have questions now?
I do. I'll be.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. And I will ask to the applicant. My question is around the livability. And looking at the two, three-bedroom units on the third and fourth floor, I'm just curious what the approximate square footage of those units are going to be.
Sure, I'm just flipping through my, my plans to, to try to pull square footages out. Taiso, please feel free to, to jump in if, if you have those number, numbers handy. I, I don't have the, the specific square footage of those units on the third and fourth floor, but what I can, I can tell you is that the average square footage of all three-bedroom units is nine hundred and thirteen square feet.
Um, okay, I just, if it can be information that comes in at some point, perhaps staff have that. Okay, so that's good. We don't have that right now. I just had a question also around the spread between studio and one-bedroom units. And they are pretty much at a fifty-fifty share of the units that are not two- and three-bedroom units. And I'm curious if those, I, I see the minimum in the policy, the minimum square footage for studios are three hundred and twenty square feet. Is that what we could expect the majority of these studios to be? To be that size?
Hi, this is Taiso Yamamoto, the architect for the project. So the upper-level three beds would be just under a thousand square feet. The studios would be all greater than that minimum size and in the range of around three hundred and ninety square feet to around three hundred and sixty square feet.
Okay.
As we go through the design conditions, there may be some slight modification to unit sizes, but we are, you know, required to hit the percentage of two and three beds and to hit those minimum unit sizes, so, so that is not a, something we're aiming to vary.
Okay, and then, that's great. Thank you for that. Just curious what sort of design considerations will be implemented or at least referenced as more of the design detail comes to fruition around partitioning and things like that for studio, but the studio units.
So just to clarify, you're asking about the party wall condition between the two, between adjacent units?
No, within the studio unit. So some studios seem to have either pony walls or sort of convertible retractable doors that act as partitions within the unit?
So at present, we haven't, you know, finalized the actual interior layout and whether there are partitions or not. At, at present, this bed is part of the living kitchen open space. That's, that way, there's less barrier between the window and the actual bed. But this is something we would have to work through with, with planning to make sure that we're not, we're still following HAD, Horizontal Angle of Light, all of those other technical requirements that we need to meet.
Right. And so my final question, and this might be directly with the, to the applicant, is I'm curious how the proportion of studio units in buildings such as these, and perhaps there haven't been a lot of examples over the past ten years, but I'm curious how that has changed in terms of a trend.
Lucas, do you want to answer this? I think part of the goal here is to have a really amenity-rich building, including a relationship with the, with the retail. So a whole building operates as one and, and the residence and the retail is really intertwined.
I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just curious about the change in the trend over time. Are we, are we building, are we building a purpose-built rental where the units, proportion of studio units over one bedroom and the size is changing to what I would call a downward trend or not? I, I'm very familiar with the newer, the Veridian, Berard and Fourteenth that has this sort of communal living space, which is of course not activated right now because of COVID. So I'm familiar with the philosophy. I'm just wondering what's the trend. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, so typically in, in, in our specific projects, we would look to, to provide roughly an even split between studios and one-bedrooms, maybe slightly skewing towards a two-bedroom. But there's a bunch of different factors that, that come into play. If you're speaking about like coal-living trends, which I, I'm not totally sure, but I may be inferring that, that you, that you are. I mean, I think we're, we're sort of test-fitting that in, in future projects, but it's, it's not something that's, sorry, over time, but not something that's coming to fruition yet. So I hope that answers your question.
Thanks so much. That's time there. And so, Council, I don't see anybody else in the queue. So now we're going to move to hear from the public. If anybody wants to get in on this, please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, code one-oh-six-one-four-four-five-pound to get on the line. And we have, I think, one speaker signed up to this one. Just looking here. Right, we have Karim Windsor.
Yeah, I'm on the line if you can hear me.
I sure can. Please, you have up to five minutes to make your statement. Go ahead.
Sure. So my name's Karim Windsor. I live at eight-two-six East Twenty-third, which is at Twenty-third, East Twenty-third in Prince Albert, which is exactly five blocks south of, I call it Sammy's Carpet. I've been listening for the last, I guess, forty-five minutes or so about the, from the councilors. And so I have a, I have a, a son in grade one at Charles Dickens Annex, which is, which is the catchment for the property, eight-ten Kingsway. And I have a daughter in Charles Dickens, which is the main school, which is on the north side of Kingsway. So the kids on the north side typically go to the main school, and the kids on the south side of Kingsway go to the, go to the Annex. So my son, who's in grade one, there's only fourteen kids in his class. So I, I heard a conversation about capacity. I think there's capacity, at least in the Annex. And I know when my son was in kindergarten, there was only like fourteen or fifteen kids. So, um, yeah, I think, I think there's going to be more room going forward. I think it's a great spot to put rental housing on Sammy's Carpets because it's, it's a really underutilized property. I've had two neighbors that live in the area that have, that were renters. The houses sold, they were evicted. And both neighbors were unable to find decent housing within kind of the school catchment between Main and, not Main, Fraser and Knight, Kingsway and King Edward. So I think having this type of rental housing, especially in this catchment, would be useful to families because there is a shortage and we're losing friends and neighbors because of the shortage. That part of Kingsway, eight-ten Kingsway, is, if you, if you go for a walk-along there, it pretty much dies at Fraser. Fraser and Kingsway is where there's, there's people. But once you start walking east, probably like a hundred meters, fifty meters east of Fraser Street, it's basically a no-man's land until you hit. it's basically a no man's land until you hit, until you hit closer to Knight and Savon. So I think having condos and, not condos, rental housing and retail and eyes on the street will be good for the neighborhood in general and it'll make the area a little bit more vibrant. I think because the building's on the south side of the street and the sun will be shining northwards, it's, you're going to have shadow on Kingsway instead of a bunch of single-family houses. So I think that's good for the area. That's about it. As you can tell, I support the project. I think it's a great location for it. I think if I have any critique is why we're not putting more density on there. But thank you for your time and thanks to RISE for proposing it.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so just wanted to thank you so much for calling in tonight. I don't have anybody officially, else officially on the list, council, so I'm going to make my first call for additional speakers. Any speakers who wish to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, pound, to get on the list. And the number's on Twitter and on the live stream. It's the first call. Clerks, is there anybody on the line?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, we have no one on the line for this item.
Okay, so I'll make my second call. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, hashtag, to get on the list. And council, we're coming in at 10 to 7. And I'll ask the clerks again, has anybody phoned in?
The clerk here, Mayor Stewart? No.
Okay, so my last, third call. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, hashtag, to get on the list before close. And council, it is 7:52, so I'll call us back at 7:57 to hear from speakers or to close the list and to move on to questions, debate and decision. Okay, thanks, council. We'll see you in five. Clerks, I'll just check if there's anybody else on the line.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We do have other people on the line for the next items, but we're just, they have been listening. So we're just double-checking if you could give me just a couple of seconds here.
No problem.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, we have no one else for this item.
Okay, thanks so much. So we're going to close the list now. And we've received a few public comments after 5:00 PM today. So we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, ask further questions of staff and make a decision. I'll just ask quickly, does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, not at this time. Thank you, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? And I'm just going to go to the queue here. Any questions for staff? Don't see anybody on the list for questions for staff. So can we have somebody move the recommendation?
Boyle, I'm happy to move.
Councillor Boyle. Thank you, councillor Kirby Young, seconded. Okay. So now I'm going to move to the main queue for debate about this item. If you'd like to say anything to this item, please put yourself on the list. Councillor Swanson, go ahead, up to five minutes. Sorry, I took you off the queue here. Up to five, please go ahead. Oh, you might be on mute. Might be on mute, councillor Swanson? Nope, still can't hear you. Nope, still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Up to five, please go ahead.
So yeah, I'm desperately seeking affordability here. If we did have, if it was like the other development and we had 40% of the units at 70% of market and that would mean $1,300 for a studio, that's still not cheap. It means probably market is $1,857 for a studio, not cheap. If, you know, if the applicant could assure us that there was going to be some affordability in this, I could go for it. But as it is now, I'm going to hold out. I'll probably be the lone holdout here for affordability. But that's what I'm going to do. I think we have to start making sure that all of our developments have some level of affordability in them.
Okay, thank you, councillor Swanson. I've got councillor Bly. Go ahead, councillor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Excellent. I just, yeah, so I'll be speaking in support of this development. I think it raises two questions. And I don't, I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicant, but what I'm taking from some of the comments of the discussion today was that oftentimes, these projects are not necessarily financially managed in isolation and that they work together as sort of a network of applications. Some get funding and can lower and increase affordability below-market units, with below-market units. And some have to sort of deliver like we see the project before us and that they don't work in isolation from one another. So I think that's what I took from the applicant sort of reassuring, trying to reassure council that there are other projects that will have much deeper affordability. I remain concerned and I get that this is a policy conversation with staff around the growing number of studio units in proportionally to the one-bedroom. And perhaps that's because I've just been through the exercise of apartment hunting for our 20-year-old who has moved into a one-bedroom and looking at the livability of some of the studio units. And we are in an age where, over the next decade and more, the sort of social isolation will not just be related to a pandemic, but is impacted by technology. There's sort of a mental health crisis, there's a disconnect that young people are experiencing and they struggle to know how to overcome it. So I do, I do have concerns about the, again, the proportion of studio units. And we'll be asking staff to look at, we don't delineate in our policies how many studios compared to one-bedroom, two-bedroom. We sort of just talk about family-sized units, which are extremely important. And look, and quite happy to see the size proportion, or the size estimate provided by the applicant and also the location of the three-bedroom in this building. But I think we have to look at overall livability. And so I'll be supporting the project, but that's sort of my main takeaway and we'll continue conversations in that vein with staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, next, up to five.
Yes, and you know, as you stated, Mr. Mayor, it's not for us to be having policy discussions here, but notwithstanding, we are making decisions based on policies which I see as inherently flawed. So it makes it very difficult for me to be approving projects that can, that continue to come forward. It's kind of like the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. So I remain concerned that these projects come forward and we've got a lot of them coming forward without considering where we are. We're just still acting like we're in 2016, 2017 instead of in our pandemic reality. So I have reservations about pushing this application forward on that basis. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor DeGenova, up to five.
I just wanted to add my support to this project. And also just note and really highlight my appreciation for the applicant taking the time and trying to work through the processes of making those applications for provincial and federal funding to BC Housing and CMHC. And although that does, I understand, create some questions and often can leave some gaps in a pro forma. Overall, I think that as a council, when I think about the work that we do and not getting into policy, Mr. Mayor, but certainly it's not up to me what their programs are and public hearings not the place to discuss that, in my opinion. That being said, I think that, you know, there is a place and a time to discuss that and make sure that our processes do align as best as possible. And I know that our staff do a great job of trying to make sure that that happens. But that being said, I'd like to see more applications come forward with those applications to try and make rental more affordable in the city of Vancouver. I think that it's really important. And I think that it's encouraging to see that. So because there are some things that might need to be answered later, like DCL waivers, that would still come forward in the proper way if applied for. At this point in time and for the reasons that the applicant, you know, gave me comfort, the answers, that right now there was some uncertainty there as to whether or not they would do that because it may in fact preclude them from participating in an application that would make things more affordable. So for that reason, I will support them. I wouldn't want them to feel in any way that they were being punished for applying for senior-level government funding. And I just really wanted to note that because I do appreciate it and we often encourage and ask if applicants are doing this and have heard that they haven't at this time or they're going to embark on that later, maybe after rezoning passes. But I think that it's good to hear that there is that effort across levels of government to try and come together. And I'm hoping that the applicant will be successful in that funding. And I know our staff will work with the applicant to make sure that we make this project as affordable as possible and to meet the Housing Vancouver Strategy Goals that we have, or the Housing Vancouver Goals that we've set out. So thanks very much and I'll leave my comments there.
Thanks so much. Councillor Weeb, up to five.
Yeah, I'm hoping moving forward, we can really look at not having blank rooftops, recognizing that we are in a climate emergency and that we need to take advantage of the fact we're in a rain city and use that water as a resource as we look to increase the circularity of the city. So I hope moving forward, we can really make sure that we aren't leaving places like this untouched. Second is, I also want to make sure that our amenity spaces and our buildings are livable. And so I appreciate that there will be some movement to try to make larger amenity spaces so that people in the building can connect once COVID has passed. I think that it's critical that we make our buildings as livable as possible and try to find ways to make people have the ability to connect with each other and the neighbors, recognizing how important connection is to well-being. I do think that this area can utilize the commercial space in this way. And I think that overall building and massing work for the space. So we'll be supportive of the project. But I do hope that during the development process, we can work on new ways to ensure we're meeting our climate and well-being goals as a city.
Thanks, councillor Weeb. I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I am going to call the vote on this item.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor. It's councillor DeGenova, I need a vote of just in favor. Thank you.
Okay. I'll let the clerks do that. Thanks, council. So that has passed with councillor Swanson in opposition. Thanks, council. Okay. That's item one of four down. So we're moving on to item two, which is 2268 East Broadway. Just to ask if anybody has a conflict of interest, just to declare it now. We don't have any speakers to this one, council, so perhaps we might be able to waive this application, but I'll wait till we get there. And I'll let the clerk read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Omicron AAC Limited to rezon 2246, 2268 East Broadway from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 57 Strata-titled residential units, a height of 19.7 meters and a floor-space ratio of 2.65 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list.
2268 East Broadway from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 57 Strata-titled residential units.
Just, I'm just going to pause you there.
2.65 are proposed.
I'm just going to pause you there, clerks. There seems to be some problem with your audio. You kind of went to very clear, to being in some kind of cavern. I'm not quite sure what's happening there, but.
Hi, sorry, I think we had one of the applicants join in on the webex. I'll continue with the summary.
Yeah, could you just go back, you know, a couple of sentences? Because we missed a.
Definitely, yeah. So, okay. So 57 Strata-titled residential units, a height of 19.7 meters and a floor-space ratio of 2.65. meters and a floor space ratio of 2.65 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary recommendation of the public hearing agenda. And the following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. 14 pieces in opposition and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. And this represents all correspondence received up to 4:30 p.m. today.
Great. Thanks so much for that. And so if anybody wants to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, hashtag to get on the list. And the number's on Twitter. We have Tess Monroe from the Planning Center, sorry, the Rezoning Center. And I'm going to ask counsel, there are no speakers registered for this one. Would anybody like to see the presentation or do we just, we can just move on? I see Counsel Hardwick.
Move to waive the application. I mean, the presentation.
It sounds like we could have a vote on it. So I'll just call yays and nays. I guess we'll go to recorded vote. Let's go to recorded vote on this one. Folks want to waive the application?
Mayor, I thought if one member wanted to see it, we saw it recognizing this official here.
That's my default, but I had a motion moved to waive it. And so when there's a motion, I'll just go to a vote.
So is it in, are we voting in favor of...
Waiving.
Waiving?
Yes.
Okay, changing the rules, but okay.
The motion was to waive, so I'm not changing the rules.
No, I mean, the indication that someone wanted to see the presentation, that it would be provided has been the standard.
So that's a procedural question. What I do is informally ask if one person says they'd like to see it, then I just go ahead. But if somebody formally moves a motion to waive the presentation, then I will go to a vote. So we just don't usually get there. So I need Counsel Currie Young and Counsel Dajnov. Counsel Dajnov?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I didn't want to call a point of privilege, so I emailed the clerk that I was fine. That I was fine and pleased to record my vote as waving.
As waving. Okay, so that's in favor of waving.
Yes, that's what I said.
I can hear somebody eating there in the background, so if you just mute, that would be great. Okay, so what have we got? Okay, thanks, Counsel Dajnov. Great, okay. And so that has passed. So we're waiving with Counsel Domano, Boyle, Weeb and Hardwick in opposition. So we're moving ahead.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if it's point of privilege or parliamentary procedure in this case.
I'm not going to guess, so.
Oh, okay. Well, again, I'm concerned that when there has been a process that has been followed, that it would be deviated from in this way. And I'm going to formally object to it because that is preventing counsel and the members of public from seeing this presentation. This is the first time this has been done and I just want to state my objection publicly.
Sure. Okay, so we have the applicant team here. Applicant team here wish to speak to the application.
Parliamentary procedure.
Counseler Bly.
Yes, it's Counsel Bly. I need to just echo Counsel Hardwick's concern and Counsel Weeb's with process here, just whether or not Counsel Carr intended to move the motion or not and would consider rescinding it.
Sure. Okay, so this is debate. You're having debate right now and that's not where we're at. Where we're at is...
I guess my point of parliamentary procedure is, is it possible to rescind that motion? Because I do think it was made and sort of to help expedite, but it's actually done the opposite and it's had us deviate from normal procedure.
If Counsel Bly is moving to rescind, I will second that.
Yeah. You have to vote in the affirmative to move to rescind.
I abstained.
Okay, hold on a second.
Oh, for heaven's sakes, I'll vote to rescind. I mean, I'll move to rescind.
I'll just have to check with Legal here. I'll be right back. Okay, counsel. So we have a motion on the floor to rescind the vote. And so I will need a seconder for that. The motion was from Counsel Bly.
Seconded, Counsel Currie Young.
Okay, great.
Mayor Stewart, pardon the interruption. It is the clerk here. Just a technicality. It would be to reconsider.
Right. Okay, thank you. So we'd have to vote to reconsider and then we'd have to vote again on the motion. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll just vote on the reconsideration then. Clerks, is it, it's just a majority vote to reconsider, right?
That is correct.
Thanks. So if you can just trigger the voting system here, we'll... Counsel Dajnov?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Point of privilege. I'll be voting in opposition to reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. So that passes with Counsel Dajnov in opposition. And now we're going to go back to voting on Counselor Carr's motion to waive the, to waive the presentation.
Sorry, Mayor. Point of parliamentary procedure. I think the whole idea was to withdraw the motion altogether because it was outside of our typical procedure and typically...
No, that's not it actually at all. We're following the correct procedure. There was a motion on the floor, which we voted in the affirmative, and we've just voted to reconsider. And I've explained the procedure a couple of times. What I do informally is when there are no speakers, I ask if people will want to waive the presentation. And then if one person says yes, then I usually proceed. But in this case, somebody put a motion on the floor to waive it and we formally voted on that. So we're not deviating from the procedure. We've just gone, we just went down the path a little further than we usually go. So that's where we are. And where we are right now is revoting on Counselor Carr's motion to waive the presentation. Counsel Dajnov?
Well, I'm in page one. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So that passes, sorry, that Counsel Carr's motion now fails with Counsel Currie Young, Bly, Domano, Boyle, Weeb, Hardwick, Swanson, Frye and Carr in opposition. Okay, staff, so we can go ahead with your presentation.
Yep, I'll just share the screen. Okay, just confirming that counsel can see that?
We can.
Great. So, good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Tess Monroe and I'm the rezoning planner for this application. This rezoning application is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The site shown outlined in red is comprised of four RS1 zone lots and is currently occupied with single detached homes. It is located on the south side of East Broadway between Lakewood Drive and Garden Drive. As this application involves the consolidation of four RS1 zone lots containing secondary rental units, the tenant relocation plan policy applies. None of the tenants are eligible for provisions under the TRP policy due to previous ownership or length of tenancy. However, all tenancies are protected under the BC Residential Tenancy Act. The site is located within the catchment of Valora Secord Elementary School located less than a block west of the site and within the catchment of the Vancouver Technical Secondary School located approximately 600 meters east. The site is well-served by transit. Frequent bus service is available on Broadway and along the Nymo Street. And the site is approximately 700 meters or a 10-minute walk from the Commercial Broadway Skytrain Station. Several bikeways are also in close proximity as shown by the dotted lines on this map. And Trout Lake Park is located approximately 400 meters to the south. The site is currently zoned RS1. The block to the south is zoned RM8A, which allows for three-story ground-oriented stacked townhouses or row house development. To the east is an Nymo shopping node, which is identified within the Grandview Woodland Community Plan for increased height and density through rezoning in order to enhance its mixed-use nature and neighborhood-serving function. Three significant rezonings for six-story residential developments have recently been approved by council in the neighboring area and are shown outlined here in green. This proposal is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Plan, which was adopted in 2016 and is a comprehensive document designed to shape growth and change in the neighborhood over the next 30 years. It strikes a balance between a wide range of considerations, including community input, community needs assessments, citywide policies, technical and design analysis, and economic testing. The plan was approved after more than four years of a public process. This planning process included a wide variety of stakeholder events such as storytelling events, questionnaires, dialogue sessions, and stakeholder-focused activities. There are also a number of theme-based and sub-area-focused workshops and related activities. Many of them were held directly in the sub-area of the, this sub-area of the plan. The site is within the Commercial Broadway Station precinct subarea where the plan provides direction to support the development of a transit-oriented neighborhood, featuring a broader, broad array of housing opportunities as well as services and jobs. At this location shown as a red box on the map, residential buildings up to six stories in height can be considered. A density of up to 2.65 can also be considered based on the intended urban design performance. In accordance with the plan, this application proposes to rezon the site from RS1 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story residential building with 57 Strata units. Thirty-nine percent of the units in the building are proposed as family units, which exceeds the 35% minimum requirement under the city's family room policy. A maximum height of 17.7 meters and an FSR of 2.65 are proposed. This application was received on February 24, 2020 and represents an approximately 11-month review process to public hearing. In lieu of an in-person event due to COVID-19 pandemic, a virtual open house was held from June 29 to July 19, 2020 on the Shape Your City platform. Public input was received throughout the application process through online questions and comment forums and by email and phone. A total of 29 submissions were received. Feedback on this application included comments of support related to additional housing stock welcomed in the area and support for the height and density. Concerns included the potential for increased traffic congestion resulting from this development and disagreement with the permitted six-story height in the area, with the building being noted as too tall. In response to public comments and through review by staff and recommendations from the Urban Design Panel, staff included conditions to improve neighborhood fit. These include conditions to provide a three-story street wall and to maintain the setbacks as per the plan, moving the building closer to the Broadway. The applicant team has since explored refinements to the design to incorporate this advice and submitted supplemental drawings to demonstrate their intent to meet the conditions. These are shown here for reference and will be reviewed further by staff and the Urban Design Panel at the development permit stage if the rezoning is approved. Additionally, as part of the application, the applicant provided a traffic study, which was reviewed for safety and additional trip generation, and was supported by engineering services. This application generates approximately $730,000 in CACs to be allocated towards the community benefits outlined in the Grandview Woodland Public Benefit Strategy. Further, total DCLs are approximately 1.9 million would be anticipated. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, this response, this project will contribute to approximately 200 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative recovery phase. In summary, this proposal meets the intent of the Grandview Woodland Plan. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. And staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Great. Thank you so much. So the applicant team, is the applicant team here to speak the application? And would you like to speak to it or just answer questions?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, Kevin Hanvey. I'm the Design Professional Architect applicant. And I have also on the line Steve Kralanovich, my client. We don't have a presentation. Thank you, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks very much. So let rip, counsel. You got questions? Put yourself on the queue there and to staff or the applicant team. Okay, I don't see any questions. So let's see, how can I...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was struggling there to get...
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I just, I wanted to say to staff, I had a look at the 3D modeling that was done on this site, on the city's website. If anybody, it's done on Sketchfab. And I just wanted to say, well done. This is something that I'm hoping that we'll be seeing more. I don't know if there's anyone from staff on the call that can comment on this 3D modeling and whether we will be seeing it in further applications. Is there anyone that can address the 3D model?
Sure, we probably have somebody there in the staff team.
Yes, thank you for that. The 3D model was provided by the applicant. This is in response to shifting to the Shape Your City platform. The model was also provided for the Urban Design Panel but was included on the website for the virtual open house period.
Okay, so it was specific to the applicant. Oh, well, the department should look at this. It's really quite excellent. We've talked about switching gears here for a minute. We've talked about the fact that this is compliant with the Grandview Woodlands Plan. But I understand that it is not consistent with the Citizens Assembly work that was undertaken a number of years ago. Is that true? My understanding was this Citizens Assembly specified four stories at this location.
Yes, this is Tess Monroe. The Citizens Assembly did recommend four stories as part of a wide range of recommendations. There are close to 200 recommendations. That was taken into account with other considerations for this area to encourage growth and a range of housing types. And so six stories was what was approved under the plan that was approved by council in 2016.
Okay, so a little bit of a difference of opinion between the plan and the assembly. What are the current targets in the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan? And where do we stand on that? How does this respond to that plan?
Can you be a little more specific with your question in terms of...
Yeah, sure. The Grandview Woodlands Community Plan has targets for different housing typologies. And I'm sure that, I mean, you've said that this is consistent with the Grandview Woodlands Plan, so you must have considered how it's stacking up against the plan in terms of different housing typologies under the plan. So I'm looking for an indication of where we stand with respect to this housing typology in that context.
We don't have the specific number of the target for Strata housing, but this proposal is consistent with the intended unit type for this area and would provide 57 Strata units to the overall plan.
Okay, just a suggestion. It would be nice to know when we are quoting plans, how we're stacking up against them. Targets get used elsewhere in these applications, so that's a request. Thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counsel Weeb, up to five. Might be on mute.
Yeah, just the parkade in the back, the street-level parkade. I see that in, they talk about it being removed. I'm just wondering... talk about it being removed. I'm just wondering where that conversation's at to provide more green space on the back end of the property.
Yes, absolutely. The original application proposed street-level visitor parking. As part of the recommendations from the Urban Design Panel and from staff, we've included a condition to put that parking in the below grade in the parking structure.
And then what is the anticipated use of the ground level?
To provide enhanced landscaping opportunities, and that will be reviewed further through the development permit.
So that could improve the transition from this property to the property beside it? The other, the parcade entrance is on a side of the street that doesn't have an access to the busier street or arterial street. I'm just wondering why the parcade is on the western side, not the eastern side of the building, to reduce the amount of traffic for local residents?
Tess, I could take that question if you'd like. Thanks for the question, Counselor Weep. The site is almost flat, but not quite, and the low point is where the access to the underground parking is currently proposed. It's a very difficult site to be able to actually achieve access to the underground parking because it is relatively small and flat, so we just had a little bit of extra topography there to help us out, and that's the reason for the location.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, thanks. I don't see any other folks on the queue for questions, so I'm gonna go to the public now. We don't have anybody on the list, but I want to put out the number 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list, and I'll make that my first call and check with the clerks now. Is there anyone on the line to speak to this item?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, and no one for this item.
Okay, so I'll make my second call. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list, and counsel, we are at 7:32. So I'm just gonna ask the clerks if anybody else, if anybody's joined?
No.
Okay, third and final call, 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound to get on the list, and counsel, we're at 7:33, so let's come back at 7:38 to see if anybody's joined us. Thanks, we'll see you in five. With the clerks, if we have anybody on the line for this item?
The clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and we have no one for this item.
Great, okay, thanks so much. So that's the third and final call, and now we're going to close the speaker's list, and as there were few or no public comments received after 5:00 p.m., we're gonna close the receipt of public comments and move to hearing, closing comments, and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Just to, no, just to say thank you to Mayor and Council for your time this evening.
Thanks so much. Counsel, have, staff have any closing comments?
No, we don't have any closing comments, but thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Just put yourself on the queue if you have any. Three, two, one, okay. Nobody there. So, we're gonna move on to make a decision, so can we have a mover for this item? Thank you. Seconder? Have a seconder?
Counselor Weep.
Thank you, Counselor Weep. Okay, so we are shifting queues and we're in debates. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Looks like not, so we're gonna move to the vote. Counselor? Great. Counselor Kirby Young, just need your vote on this one. Thank you so much. That has passed with Counselor Swanson in opposition. Thanks, counsel. We're moving on to number three, which is the rezoning on West 42nd Avenue. Just to remind you, declare conflict of interest now if you have one. Three, two, one, okay, and we're gonna move to the clerk now, who's gonna read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Urban Solutions Architecture Limited to rezone 441 to 475 West 42nd Avenue from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of an 18-story residential building with a four-story podium and a partial rooftop story for a common amenity space containing 124 secured rental units, of which not less than 20% of the total floor area will be secured at below-market rates. A building height of 57.7 metres to the top of the parapet, with additional height for a rooftop amenity and a floor-space ratio of 6.70 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in support, two pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application, and this represents correspondence received up to 4:30 p.m. today.
Thanks so much. Anybody wants to speak to this? Please call 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 pound to get on the list, and we have Kent McDougall from the Rezoning Centre. We do have speakers to this item, so we'll go ahead with the presentation, and Mr. McDougall, if you'd like to go ahead, that'd be great.
Sure, I'm just gonna... The presentation is visible?
Yes, we can see it. I'll just check the public stream. Yep, it's on both, so please go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kent McDougall, and I'm the rezoning planner for this application at 441 to 475 West 42nd Avenue. This application is for an 18-story secured rental residential building with 20% of the floor area at below-market rates and is being considered under the Canby Corridor Plan. The site, highlighted in red, is situated on the north side of West 42nd Avenue between Canby Street and Alberta Street. The site is within 250 metres of the Oakridge 41st Canada Line Skytrain Station and the Oakridge Centre Shopping Mall. It consists of three lots, which are currently developed with detached houses. None of the houses have basement suites, and units on site are currently occupied with tenants who are aware of the rezoning application. Out of the three tenancies, one is eligible for provisions under the city's tenant relocation and protection policy, including relocation assistance, assistance with moving costs, compensation based on length of tenancy, right-of-first refusal into the new building. The applicant has provided a draft tenant relocation plan, which will be secured as a condition of rezoning. None of the three houses were constructed prior to the 1940s, nor were they identified in the plan as potential heritage site. The three-lot assembly is currently zoned RS1 residential. Across the rear lane to the north and northwest along West 41st Avenue are two CD1 zoned sites. CD1 586 has been developed with a six-story residential building with two-story townhouses at the rear, and CD1 688 is developed with a six-story residential building. Across the commercial lane to the west, the properties fronting Canby Street are currently zoned C2 commercial. However, there's an active rezoning application for a mixed-use development, with towers at 14 and 27 stories being considered on this public hearing agenda. South and east of the site, along West 42nd Avenue, is zoned RS1. However, the plan allows for consideration of four, six, and up to 18-story apartment buildings in this location. The site is located within the catchment of the Sir William Van Horn Elementary School, located approximately three blocks east of the site, and within the catchment of Eric Hamburgh Secondary School, located approximately 1.4 kilometres northwest from the site. According to the Vancouver School Board's 2019 Draft Long Range Facilities Plan, there is capacity at both Van Horn Elementary and Eric Hamburgh Secondary, and both schools have forecasted capacity into 2027. The site is well-served by transit, with the site being an approximate three-minute walk from the Oakridge 41st Skytrain Station, and provides access to the Canada Line, as well as major bus routes such as the R4 Rapid Bus along 41st Avenue, with service between Joyce Collingwood Station and UBC. There are also a number of bikeways in close proximity, including along West 42nd Avenue. Future land use on the subject site is guided by the Canby Corridor Plan. Building on the opening of the Canada Line, the plan promotes transit-oriented development to meet the needs of a growing population. Phase one of the plan was completed in 2010 and delivered overarching principles for the corridor and an interim rezoning policy for rezoning applications received by the city during plan development. In 2011, council adopted phase two of the Canby Corridor Plan, which provided land use policy for arterial sites in the Canby Corridor, as well as an interim public benefit strategy. In 2018, council adopted phase three of the Canby Corridor Plan, which expanded upon the broader corridor strategy and provided land use transitions between higher-density core areas and adjacent lower-density single-family areas and policy for the surrounding neighbourhoods. Phase three also included detailed direction on affordable housing and public benefits to support this growing area, as well as public realm plan to guide design and requirements of these new public spaces. The subject site is located within the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre neighbourhood of the plan, and it is one of 17 designated municipal town centres and a frequent transit development area in the Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy. As the geographic centre of the city and midpoint of the Canada Line, the Oakridge MTC area represents one of the most significant concentrations of urban uses and density in the corridor. The area is to be a vibrant hub within the Canby Corridor that meets community, citywide, and regional needs by providing opportunities to deliver housing and jobs in transit-oriented hub, while continuing to expand amenities and services to create a complete community. Within the municipal town centre are a number of policy subareas, with this rezoning site being located within the high-density residential areas of the plan. These off-arterior residential areas are intended to deliver a range of affordable housing options and create a diversity of building forms while integrating improved streetscapes to connect the neighbourhood to adjacent parks, shops, and services within the municipal town centre. Four-story building forms can be considered with increased height and density for projects, including either 100% of the residential floor area secured rental housing, with a minimum of 20% provided as below-market rental, with rental rates and operating requirements in accordance with the city's moderate-income rental housing programme, or 30% of the residential floor area provided as social housing. Specifically along West 42nd, the plan supports residential buildings up to 18 stories, pursuing the inclusionary housing requirements. Buildings here are expected to create a consistent, continuous urban street edge, with engaging private space associated with each ground-oriented unit. The plan also allows for consideration of an additional partial floor for a common rooftop indoor amenity space if it is contiguous with a common outdoor amenity space, and supportable density is to be determined by analysis based on site-specific urban design and public round performance. This rezoning application, which was received in September of 2019, represents an approximate 16th review timeline, 16-month review timeline to public hearing. Our normal review timeline is about 12 months. In this case, processing time was extended. As one of the first applications in the high-density residential areas, this application required some additional work, testing out policies, ensuring project viability while meeting the plan goals. The outcomes of this work will help inform the review of future applications in the area. Regarding this application, in accordance with the plan, an 18-story secured rental residential building is proposed, with a four-story podium and a common rooftop amenity. The application includes 124 rental residential units. 20% of the floor area, which is approximately 29 units, is to be secured at below-market rates. A density of 6.7 FSR and tower heights of 189 feet to the top of Level 18, with additional height for the indoor rooftop amenity, are proposed. The common rooftop indoor amenity is contiguous with the common outdoor amenity space on the rooftop, and it is in addition to a smaller indoor and outdoor amenity space on Level 5. Forty-three parking spaces are proposed and one and a half levels of underground parking, which can be accessed from the rear lane. Loading, passenger drop-off, garbage recycling, and bicycle maintenance and wash-up facilities are also accessible from the rear lane. Regarding the affordability of the proposed rental, this table shows the below-market rental rates for the below-market portion of the building in the two left columns. The market rates for the newer buildings in the west side are shown in the centre, compared to ownership costs on the right-hand side of the table. The market rental and below-market rental provide a more affordable housing alternative to home ownership for more than half of Vancouver's population, and contributes to city initiatives including creating diverse and sustainable communities. and contributes to city initiatives, including creating diverse and sustainable communities. In terms of public consultation, a city-led open house was hosted by staff on November 20th of 2019 with 42 attendees, and staff received a total of 38 pieces of feedback through the process. Comments received in support of the proposal generally cited the appropriateness of building height, massing, and density, given the proximity to rapid transit and future Oak Ridge redevelopment, the building design, support for more rental units, and support for the proposed parking, given proximity to transit. Concerns raised through the process generally related to the building height, massing, and density overwhelming the surrounding neighborhood without an appropriate transition. Transit capacity was also a concern, as well as traffic and safety, both during construction and in the future, and some concerns around building design. In response to public feedback, staff note that the proposed building complies with the plan in terms of housing tenure, building height, and density, and that parking is to be provided in accordance with the parking bylaw, with eligible reductions with a supportable transportation demand management plan. As well, through conditions included in Appendix B of the report, further design development will be required to step back the rooftop amenity to address the apparent height and massing of the building and to optimize the performance of the outdoor amenity space in terms of size and orientation, as well as to further improve the interface between the street and the lane with an increased rear setback, which moves the building forward towards West 42nd Avenue and provides a variety of landscape treatments. The proposal is also required to provide a cash contribution of $50,000 for traffic calming measures to address the neighborhood traffic impacts from the rezoning, and will also provide speed bumps in the rear lane. Regarding public benefits, the proposal will contribute approximately 3.8 million in public benefits with over 3.5 million in development cost levies and 250,000 towards public art and a contribution of 124 secured rental units, with approximately 29 at below-market rates towards the city's housing goals. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 434 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. In conclusion, the proposal is consistent with the Canby Corridor Plan. Staff support this application, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your presentation, and we have the applicant team here to speak to this application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Donald Yen, architect for the project. We have our delegation here, Mr. Paul Williams and Mitchell Meredith. At this time, we do not have any further elements to add.
Okay, thanks. There may be questions from council, so I'll move to that section of the application process. So councillors, I'm sorry, I had the wrong queue queued up. So if you have questions, please put yourself on the question queue. And I have councillor Swanson. Again, just a reminder to councillors, this is the only time you have to ask questions to the applicant. So councillor Swanson, please go ahead, add up to five minutes.
Yeah, did I hear the staff person say that the DCLs will be paid on this development?
Yes, that's correct.
So why is it that they're being paid on this MERP development, but on other MERPs they're not?
Just to clarify, that's a really good question. This proposal isn't a MERP project per se. It's coming in under the Canby Corridor Plan, and the Canby Corridor Plan allows for increase from four-story strata into an up-to-18-story rental project, provided they hit preset affordable housing targets. So that's what they are proposing, and it's under that plan. In this case, they've elected not to pursue the DCL waiver as part of their application.
So the 20% is just 20%? It's not the MERP 20%, but it's very similar to it? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. The 20% is a below-market target, as per the plan. The below-market housing is to have rates and operating requirements such as under the MERP program, but it is not part of the MERP program itself.
So, but the rents are the same as the MERP rents?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Swanson and councillor Harwick. Up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm curious about the parking situation. It says it meets the parking requirements, but I saw 43 parking spots versus usually required, I think, 105 for residential. Can you explain?
Yes, thank you. So there is a requirement for, I believe, on this particular proposal, it's about 94 parking stalls would be under the parking bylaw itself. With an applicable transportation demand management plan, the proposal can achieve up to a 60% reduction. That's 20% for proximity to Skytrain and 40% through transportation management initiatives. In this case, some of those initiatives include real-time transit updates, enhanced bicycle parking, wash-up facilities, car-share memberships, and things of the like. The plan itself, the TDM plan, is subject to DP approval.
Sticking to the transportation question, my understanding is that the Canada Line is being pushed to capacity at this time. Has that been taken into consideration? Are we just broadly labeling this transit center development and not drilling into the details of capacity? Are you looking at capacity is the question?
Thank you, councillor. It's Cynthia Lau, rezoning center. We don't have engineering staff in the room today. However, as part of the analysis that is taken into account, and the transportation consultants will also review that as part of their TDM plan through the process, further down the line in development permits.
Thank you. And then regarding rents, you've got proposed rents that are included in the report. Are those considered maximum rents or medium rents? Can we make the maximum rents? For below-market, will rent stay the same between tenants? Can you elaborate a little bit on the rental tenure?
Thank you for the question. I think in this case, I'd like to defer to my colleague Sarah Robyn in the Housing Group to answer that.
Sarah Robyn here, housing planner. I just wanted to confirm that, yes, the below-market rents are aligned with the MERP program. So they will remain as the averages that are set out in the report. So studio 950 a month up to 2,403 bedroom unit, and those would remain at those average rents even upon tenant turnover. So those are secured at those rates, so they would only be allowed to increase as per the BC Tenancy Act.
So just run me through the numbers again. There's a 124 secured market rentals. 20% total floor area below-market rates?
Yes, that's correct.
What are these? What are those rates?
So those are the rates that I just mentioned. So 29 of the units are below-market, and they would follow those MERP rental rates.
Could, I just don't have those committed to memory. Have you got them handy?
Oh sure, of course. Yes, absolutely. So the studio rents are $950 a month. Average, one-bedroom, $1,200. Average rent, two-bedroom, $1,600, and three-bedroom, $2,000.
Great. Thank you very much for the detail.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Great, thanks very much. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor, and just a couple of quick questions for the applicant. I was just looking for clarification of how many units are ground-level. I wasn't clear if you mentioned townhouses, or you were talking about adjacent property. So if you could just elaborate on that?
Yes, I can do that. The basic building form is a tower form with an attached four-story podium. The number of units that actually touch the ground and match the ground are about seven units or so that are basically along 42nd Avenue. They then wrap around the west lane, and then go back towards the rear lane to the north.
Okay. And what size units are those?
Those units are, on average, about 700 to 820 square feet.
And that sort of dovetails into my other question, which is around, there was reference to four-bedroom units. What size are those four bedrooms?
The four-bedroom units are about 1,000 square feet.
And I had another question, but I can't read my own writing. So I guess I'll pause. Thank you.
Hey, thanks so much. We're on to councillor Kerr.
Yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate the detail in both the presentations and in the report. I'm just seeking clarification on the fact that the report talks about the moderate-income rental housing pilot program. And yet I heard staff say that this is not a MERP project. So could you please just clarify, yeah, just clarify why there is a tension in the report to the MERP program when it's not under the MERP program?
Thanks for the question. I can understand a bit of the confusion there. So to clarify, this proposal is coming in under the Canby Corridor Plan, which has preset affordable housing targets that set out the 20% floor areas below-market and set the rates and operating requirements in accordance with the moderate-income rental housing program, but it is not one of the sites in that specific program. The inclusion of that detail into the report was more of a reference, because the plan does make a reference to that program, so that council would be aware of it.
And the rates, the rental rates are consistent with that program. I guess with the exception that the MERP program also details that rent should be at 30% of the household income, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. And we're moving on to councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you very much. A couple of quick questions also. And sort of on a similar line, I think one point I wanted to clarify is it says that it's similar to the MERP program in terms of the benefit and the operating requirements. So for greater clarity, the approximately 29 units, or 20% of the floor area that would be below-market, would those also have vacancy control on those after the initial tenants in the same way that the MERP program does?
Sure. I will just defer to my colleague Sarah Robyn from Housing once again.
Hello, Sarah Robyn, housing planner. Yes, yes, that's correct, that those 29 below-market units, they would in effect be vacancy-controlled. So even on a change of tenant, the rents would not increase, except for the RTA allowable maximum increase annually.
So therefore, becoming more and more affordable over time?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And thank you, that's really helpful. And then pet-friendly also, this building?
As the architect, I would hope so.
There's a lot of things I hope for in this world, they don't always come true. Do we know that, or we're not sure?
I will probably say, yes, it is. I don't have that sort of operational level of understanding of that part as a pet-friendly building. But I would say that we do have, we are close to a park, and so this would be an opportunity for people with pets that could move into this location.
It would ideally, if I was allowed, if staff are able to access or, yeah, able to email that information back before we finish up on the site, I'd appreciate it. And then in terms of the rooftop amenity, is, how much, sort of in terms of green space or design, can you just sketch out the visual intention of that layout and how the space is going to be designed for me, please?
Sure. In reference to the amenity space on the roof and the adjustments, just to clarify...
Yeah, I'm just looking for a bit of flavor on the intention of the design and features in the space.
Of the rooftop amenity, I guess, in this case, for the rooftop amenity space, there wasn't necessarily much detail provided by the applicant. I'd like to defer to my colleague Omar from Development Planning for more.
Hi, Mayor and Council. This is Omar Al-Jubayr from Development Planning. At the stage of rezoning, the applicant has indicated the size and the general character of the indoor amenity space and the outdoor amenity spaces, and which would be tied to the city's guidelines for high-density residential buildings. And during the development permit stage, if the application is approved for rezoning, will be reviewed for further development. That includes programming appropriate for the use of the building.
Okay. And at that point, typically, are we seeing discussion of sort of the greenness of those roofs and the features, given the density that's going into this neighborhood? Is that something that we could expect to see after this stage?
Correct.
But also that we would, not just that that would happen procedurally after this, but that it's been happening under this plan or in those buildings in Canby Corridor, are there green elements that are being put into these roofs, or a lot of plantings?
That is correct, and staff have included conditions for further development of the spaces.
Okay, focusing on that specific consideration? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Whoops, sorry, forgot to unmute. Councillor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks. And I have a question for staff around the CACs and public benefit. I'm just trying to get a sense, I guess, of, or be reassured of the land lift capture. It seems to me like from a single dwelling to 18 stories is a pretty significant land lift. And so I'm wondering if staff can speak to the numbers and if and how that land lift is captured in the affordability aspect of this 20% of units?
Sure. In terms of how this project is evaluated from a CAC perspective, as well, I guess, others along West 42nd or in these high-density residential areas. So there are the options at four-story strata, they are subject to a target CAC. What is built into the plan are these affordable housing targets and preset affordable housing targets, where they are eligible up to 18 stories, with providing the all-rental with the 20% below-market or the 30% social housing. And that being the de facto CAC target in that scenario under the plan in this case. And so therefore, it's not subject to a CAC evaluation in that case, and it wasn't negotiated, so we don't have those numbers.
Okay, I guess it just seems like quite a bit larger jump in FSR than some of the other MERP-type projects that we have seen. Do you have the numbers on what the CAC would be if it went, just went to a four-story condo?
Hi, councillor. It's Cynthia Lau again. We don't have the specific numbers on that, but as part of the inclusionary policies that were done for this part of the Canby Corridor, it was felt that, and through the financial analysis and determining this form of development and this increase in density, that it would be an appropriate response to have this amount of density in order to incentivize the rental and the below-market rental here.
Okay. I will leave it at that for now. Thank you very much to staff and applicant for that presentation. And Mayor, I think you're muted again.
That's like a new record. I think I've done it six times today. Thank you. So that's it for questions queue. And so I'm going to call it the number 1-833-353-8610, just been code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list. And we do have speakers to this item, council, so I'm just, there we go. And the first speaker on the list is, oh, we have one, we have one speaker, Nathan Davidovich. Mr. Davidovich?
Hello, this is the mayor.
Hi, there you are. Happy New Year. Hi, there you are. Happy New Year.
Okay, you hear me. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I, I think there's a bit of a confusion. I think originally at the Urban Design Panel, this was designated or talked about as, as housing for university students. Now, I'm not sure if it's changed from that or not. So, you know, but I mean, that's what I remember, that it was supposed to be for university students. But as, as was pointed out, you know, the traffic problems for all these main streets, Canby, you know, 41st, Oak Street, all along the Canby corridor, you know, is going to be dealt with at the, at the Development Permit Board, but you know, council is not involved in that process of the Development Permit Board is completely independent. And therefore, even if the Development Permit Board proposes some solutions or some things, I don't know how council can, can do that. But, you know, I mean, let's talk about the Canby bus. This is one of the worst bus routes in the city. It runs every 15 to 20 minutes during the daytime. And if we are going to have university students living here, I'm sure most of them would want to use the bus. You know, during COVID, at the beginning of COVID, the, the bus was completely suspended. There was no bus service at all. And then it returned now, you know, it only takes about 10 minutes on the bus from 41st Avenue to Broadway. But if the service is not at, at least every 10 minutes during the rush hours, many riders don't want to take the bus as it, but it is quicker actually to take the bus from Oak Ridge Station, let's say, to Broadway because you have to take three elevators to get to the right platform at the Canada Line Station. And then you take the Canada Line for five minutes and then getting off at Broadway and going up again. And that's even longer than the bus ride. So we need the trolley buses back on Canby Street. 80% of the cost is already on the street as the heavy trolley poles are all constructed. All, all, all we need is to put the overhead copper wires and translink misled previous city councils and, and staff and never put the wires back. You know, how much GHG gases have, have been, you know, done because we have diesel buses on this route instead of electric?
I'm just going to ask you how you feel about this specific project.
Well, no, no, I mean, I have nothing against this housing for students, university students. You know, it's just all the, the problems that the Development Permit Board seems to get stuck with. And city council has, you know, no input into, into this because we don't have the franchise agreement that we had, the city had with BC Electric and BC Hydro. You know, each new building should contribute some money to, toward bus shelters in the city, like $50,000. So we have, you know, more big sized bus shelters in addition to the small French shelters that we have from the advertising company. You know, the, you know, all these reports about transit and traffic don't come to city council. Richmond City Council dealt with the night bus, the M15 bus, but it never came to, to Vancouver City Council.
Just 15 seconds left.
Yeah. And we need also the short turn of the bus loop at 41st and, and Canby. So, so these are my comments. Thank you.
Oh, you do have a question though, from Councilor Hardwick. Councilor Hardwick, please do it.
Mr. Davidovich, and thank you for your reminder again of the relationship between transit and housing density. I'm interested to know where you got the impression that this site was, was specified for student housing. Where, where did that come from?
Well, I don't know. You can ask the staff, but I thought originally it was at the Urban Design Panel or something. Somebody mentioned that.
Originally, originally, originally in the last decade?
No, no, just in the last, no, no, in the last year and a half. I thought that that was part of the, the good aspect of the project is that you provide housing for university students. But I don't know, maybe it was changed. I don't know.
Okay.
Ask the city staff. I don't know.
Okay. I was just interested where you, you got that impression because that was not something that I had read in the report. And I do take your point about the relationship with, with transit and concerns about the Canada Line and so on. But I think in this circumstance, we're focused on this particular rezoning. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it for questions. Council, we have Tracy Moyer on the phone next.
Good evening.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm Tracy Moyer. I'm the Chair of Oak Ridge Lingarei Area Residence. We're often known as OLR. I personally am a Vancouver resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I think I have spoken twice to this council. So for those of you who are not very familiar, a bit about OLR. OLR was formed in 2010 in response to the significant changes we were to expect with the Canby Corridor Plan. The founders knew big changes were coming, but had no idea at the time how massive they would be and the massive implications of them. Pretty much a high speed, high powered locomotive was heading straight at us. We quickly began to feel a development bullseye on our backs. Perhaps we are best known for our victory of securing 2.5 acres of park space at the, at the Oak Ridge Center Mall. Please note, there is still 0.33 acres, so a third of an acre outstanding of park space. The development team and sadly and very disappointingly, city health staff were prepared to consider satisfied an outstanding legal obligation since 1983 for a park by greening up the roof. Yes, it will be a beautiful green space on a rooftop, but that is not a park. We fought hard and won space for park at grade for all to enjoy, a real park at street level, not one primarily for the mall residents. Also, we significantly improved the accessibility of the groomly, green roof, again, for all. Moving to the agenda item, this is the first tower site under Canby Corridor Plan Phase Three. The phase deserves some explanation. I am referring to Phase Three as the Canby Corridor Plan initially described as the surrounding neighborhood areas off of the arterials or the transition influenced areas. That is, the areas behind the arterials, which is comprised mostly of houses owned mostly by families, not owned by developers. They might be a small developer that tears down a house and builds another house, but, but not developers larger than that. Phase two had previously addressed Canby and the arterials for a few blocks on either side of the Canada Line stations. We, the residents, were led to believe that Phase Two was completed of the Canby Corridor Plan. However, when it came time for Phase Three, the city opened up that Phase Two areas, those that are within the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Center for additional height and density to improve housing affordability and other community amenities. More about this when we move to item four this evening. I want to make sure I am clear that I and OLR continue to use the old Phase Two term for the arterials in the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Center. And Phase Three is used to refer to the surrounding neighborhood, the areas behind the arterial in the Oak Ridge MTC, which is generally houses. Moving to this project, it is good to see a purpose built rental building in this area. We welcome that. The plan is very prescriptive and this project, we believe, follows the plan sufficiently. We therefore support this project. Again, going back in time, when Canby Corridor Plan Phase Three was before council for adoption or prior to that, OLR did not complain about the relatively high percentages of affordable housing required for these tower sites in Phase Three and the MTC. We were prepared to take one for the team, given our housing crisis. Had we known what we know now, I think we probably would have objected. We know the larger redevelopment site, the greater the opportunity and justification for affordable housing components and other community amenities, amenities. These Phase Three Tower Sites are relatively small projects, at least in our neighborhood. And when compared to the nearby large Canby redevelopments, which provide less affordable housing and less community amenities, relatively speaking, the Phase Three MTC Towers, Tower Sites are providing far more than their fair share. When we factor in our many major sites in the Canby Corridor, we see the same problem of too little affordable housing and two other, too little other community amenities on the major sites. Unfortunately, OLR can now not offer solutions to this problem. We ask council to consider hard how to reconsider the affordability components required in these three, Phase Three small tower sites. When you compare them to the requirements from the much larger Phase Two redevelopments in the MTC, and I'll be discussing this more in, in item four. Thank you, Council.
Thanks. You do have a question, Councilor Hardwick? Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yes, and thank you very much for giving some historical perspective back to, to 2010. I don't know if you heard earlier today, we started off looking at the assessment rules. And there was an interesting chart that showed the, the rapid increase in assessed values within the city of Vancouver. And when I look at the exponential land lift that has come out of, of these developments, Phase One, Phase Two, now Phase Three that you're describing, it makes it easier to understand how Vancouver has become so unaffordable. So I'm interested to hear, you talked about Phase Two being on the arterials, Phase Three being, in this case, being off, technically on 42nd, off the arterial. And, and yet you are still supporting it. Is that, you, that's begrudging? If you could go back in hindsight, I think you said you would, you would have treated this differently. I'd like to hear a little bit more from you on that.
Councilor Hardwick, thanks for your question. Yes, you completely understood what I was implying. Thank you for bringing it forward. At the very beginning of OLR, it was relatively easy. We would look at the Canby Corridor Plan. These were sites on Canby or the arterials, where the stations were, the cross arterials. And if it met the Canby Corridor Plan, we would support generally. And if it didn't, we would generally oppose. Things have become a lot more nuanced since, especially when we believe the goalposts have changed, as in this case. Sorry, in the case of, of Phase Two is what I, I mean. So it's much more difficult to support things when they meet the plan. In this case, it is begrudgingly. We still are going to support it because it meets the, basically the built form of the project, of the plan, and, and therefore it's still support. But yeah, it's certainly not going to be a big solution in terms of affordability. But if you factor in all of those tower sites throughout the whole MTC in Phase Three, that's, that's a lot of affordability that will be offered compared to the much more dense sites on the arterials in MTC that should be doing more of their fair share.
So you're not concerned that you're adding fuel to the fire, or we're adding fuel to the fire in, in this case by just adding on more? Again, I'm questioning the affordability since we're just increasing the cost of the land. Are we not just continuing a self-defeating prophecy? Do you, do you get where I'm going with that?
Well, I guess that would be a question for your real estate division. One thing that we have said at OLR all, all through the years, and we no longer say it because, simply put, we can only bring one or two items per, per topic, per speech, and I, I don't have the time to do it. But if I can take this opportunity, it's not just about the affordability. It's not about land prices. It's about the infrastructure need. It's about the fact that we, we didn't have the sewers. They're working very hard. The city's working very hard to try to get the sewer support this. Yes, their Canada Lines at capacity during the crunch times, but no one is looking at the cumulative effect of all of this, despite us brazening this for, oh, at least seven or eight years. So we'd like a comprehensive plan. We don't think we're ever going to get it. And simply put, we stopped asking for it a while ago.
Well, yeah, I think you're on the money with the cumulative effect. When we look at these individual applications in isolation, we're not looking at the cumulative effect. I know we can't talk about it since we're looking, I mean, we, we can't elaborate on it because we're looking at a specific application. But I think that's part of the problem. Anyhow, thank you very much for speaking with us today and I kind of feel your pain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Carr, up to five minutes for questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for, for coming to speak, Ms. Moyer. You used to be in council a very, very lot in the previous terms that I've been on council. So it's good to see you here or hear you here. So I have two questions. One is around, around the height and density of this project. You've said that, that OLR is supportive of the project. I do remember being at a public meeting with, with representative members and representatives of OLR in which there was a very decided request for greater height than staff had been proposing at that time. So this, this, I understand, does fit within the desire of OLR to have had that additional height in this Phase Three of the plan?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
That this, this project, you're coming to support it. So I'm assuming that height is not an issue, that this does fit with the requests that I had witnessed of OLR to have some increased height over what staff had previously proposed for Phase Three of the Canby Plan. So this does fit with your, the goals of the OLR group. Is that right?
One, one of the foundational goals, and I hope will never, ever change, and I can confirm that it has not changed yet, is that whatever is proposed under current policy, we never want to see taller. Or not, not even an inch taller, if we could even control that. So because the Canby Corridor Plan Phase Three allows us to be an 18 story building, we are supportive. We do take a little bit of, of issue with the 19th floor. We'd rather see that labeled as the 19th floor because it is 19 floors. Unfortunately, that's one of those little things you don't catch when you read the Canby Corridor, when it gets released prior to council adoption. I think at this open house, I had asked if all four sides would be set well back on that 19th floor so they wouldn't be visible from the street. If I remember correctly, one or two sides were too close to the edge of the building. I don't know if that has been changed or not. OLR has gone through a lot of transformation over the years. Once it became well known in our neighborhood that we are to become Vancouver Second Downtown, the only other municipal town center, we knew that fighting height and density would be futile. So instead we started to say, okay, you know what? If, if we have to accept density, we'll go with what the plan allows for, except not any height over and above. And I, there's already an application before with staff about additional height that's not supported. So height will always be an issue, I would like to think. Did that answer your question, Councilor?
It, it does actually. I appreciate the, yeah, I appreciate the context that you put that in. So thank you very much.
It's, it's very hard to, Councilor Carr, you and I have known each other for a long time now. So, but with new councillors at the table, it's, it's really hard to provide enough context and background. So thanks for the questions and that opportunity to provide some of it. OLR, once we have learned that we are not going to be able to stop the density, we really have to figure out how to make the density work as best for us and future people. But I hope that OLR will always, always keep staff and council's feet to the fire in terms of if X amount is the height of a building that's maximum, that's it. There's no compromise on that. That's one thing I hope we will never. That's one thing I hope we will never, ever lose as one of our foundational objectives.
Great, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions, so I want to thank you. I am now going to call for other speakers. 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, pound, to get on the list. So that's the first call. Anybody on the queue, clerks?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and... Sorry, I'm just getting a message coming through here. We have no one else on for this item.
Okay, thanks. I will call again, 1-833-353-8610. That's to get on the list. Phone number's on Twitter, and is the participant code available on live stream? And I don't expect there'll be anybody else there, but I will check with the clerks if there's anybody, and then we'll go to the third call.
Nope.
Okay, thanks. And third call then for speakers, and we're going to take a five-minute break. It's 8:31, so we will come back at 8:36. Item, thanks very much, council, see you in five. Anybody else on the queue?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and we see no one else on the queue for this item.
Thanks so much. So there's no additional speakers, so we're going to close the speakers' list, and we're going to close the receipt of public comments and ask the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a last closing comment. I'd just like to enthusiastically report that I can confirm from the councillor's question that this building will be absolutely pet-friendly, and as an owner of two little pugs myself, I am very pleased that I can report that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff, have any closing comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you. So any questions for staff, council? If you do, please put yourself on the queue. Let's wait about five seconds. I don't see anybody on the queues, so can we have somebody to move this recommendation?
So, Councillor Carr?
Okay, I heard Councillor Carr, sounds, councillor...
Dominado.
Councillor Dominado, second, thanks very much. Okay, so debate, sorry, I'm just going to move us to the queue. I'm going to clear this past queue, and we'll go ahead, if somebody would like to speak. Yep, there, Councillor Swanson, thank you. Councillor Swanson, go ahead, up to five.
Yeah, I'm going to go for this one. It's basically the only moderate-income housing in the Canby Corridor, even though it is a tiny, tiny percent, and it's really good that there's no DCL waiver, which makes me wonder if we can do essentially a MERP here without a DCL waiver. Why can't we do MRPs without DCL waivers in other buildings? Also, I'm glad that it's going to be pet-friendly. I think this is the council that's really behind this, and staff is supposed to be looking at how we can actually require it, so I'm glad the proponent has stepped forward and said it's going to be pet-friendly. In trying to figure out why we can do MERP without a DCL waiver, you know, one thought is because the FSR increase is so huge, but we've had huge FSR increases in other buildings too, like the Birch one, and they still got a DCL waiver, if I remember right. So I think we need to use this as an example of maybe a way that we could create more affordability at other sites by at least extracting a little DCL money, so that's it.
Thank you, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to particularly acknowledge the speaker from the Oak Ridge Residents Association because I think that they're taking a really constructive and pragmatic approach to this, and, you know, I understand how much significant change is going into the neighborhood, but I really appreciate them highlighting the importance of developing a plan, adhering to the plan, but advocating for affordability as much as possible within those parameters and guidelines. So with that said, I will support this project. It is badly-marketed rental housing, it's 142 units, it's a very high proportion, 50% are two-bedroom, which is very significant. I think only seven of the units were actually one-bedroom, and no studios in this particular one, and it also had 45 four-bedroom units, which is also unusual, we don't see very often. So I thought those were positives for me, the pet-friendly, whether you have a puck or another type of, you know, companion was also a positive, and near rapid transit, of course, and that is the vision and the approved plan for the area. I would also note, though, that we are seeing some more affordable units, and there has been a dearth of them coming in because it's been primarily, the strata's been built, but council did recently approve the OTC, the Oak Ridge Transit Centre, just around the corner, a couple of blocks, not even sort of two blocks away from this, which was, I think, another smart development because it had integrated housing in terms of the mix of tenure types with the market strata, the rental and social and affordable housing units. So I think that's a positive to see that variety of the different housing types and levels of affordability coming in, so I just wanted to offer that, that this isn't the first one from my perspective that we've seen coming in, and so it's a welcome addition, I think, to diversify the neighborhood there. Normally, in a Leukina building like this, I would be concerned if there wasn't any street-level retail because there is such a dearth of locally-serving needs in the neighborhood, but I recognize it is directly across from the shopping centre, which will have upgraded Safeway and some other sort of, you know, sort of amenity or grocery options there. And again, as I said, the OTC around the corner, we were assured that that would have locally-serving retail to complement. So on balance of those considerations, I will lend my support to it because it checks the boxes, so to speak, and I like the fact that not only are you getting the 29 approximately affordable, well-market affordable units, that's sort of less than 20% of market rents, but you are getting those in perpetuity, so they will become more affordable over time. And that is one way that we can progressively build the affordable housing stock of the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks, I'll also be supporting the project. Similarly, appreciate the need for more rental, and in particular, the affordable rental that's vacancy-controlled in this project. And, you know, while the community housing sector continues to build up its muscle, and we know we need more non-market right now, this type of tool in getting more below-market housing is also needed. It seems to me an appropriate density right next to transit, and appreciate the scaling that's happened from the larger Oak Ridge site. And I also continue to wrestle with the policy work that I think we need to do to ensure that there's sufficient public benefit relative to the land lift, and it's clear in many situations, including this, that that land lift happens over time through a variety of speculation. And so in one rezoning, we're only able to, at best, capture a portion of it, and here, capturing that portion in vacancy-controlled affordable units, I think, is good, but the larger policy landscape in which we're missing a lot of that public benefit, I think, continues to need to be looked at, and I know that that work is happening with staff, and so for now, support this project, and we'll just continue to be interested in how we improve those tools.
Thanks. Councillor Carr, up to five.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've, over the terms I've been on office, in office, have heard many, many applications at public hearing in the Canby Corridor, and firstly, all of them, at least very, very high percentage were all condo projects, strata projects, not rental. So to me, I'm very pleased to see this as a 100% rental project. It's the first tower under the Phase Three of the Canby Corridor Plan, and so I'm particularly happy that it is a rental project and that it does include a great deal of affordability, I mean, a great deal. There's not a huge number of units, but there is some very significant number of units that are truly affordable, and that to me is key, and the fact that there is vacancy control, they will stay as affordable units over time. I'm also happy there's no DCL waiver, I'm happy that it's pet-friendly, and happy that Ms. Moyer, the representative from the Oak Ridge Link Area Residents Association, OLR, came to speak and support. I was at the public meeting, it wasn't in council, it was in the community, where many, many people, I think there was well over 100 people, from the community spoke to our staff about their desire to actually see increased height and density in this Phase Three over what staff had originally been recommending. And so, you know, that was different than what was happening in other parts of the city, and, as I say, very happy to see OLR come to say that this is in line with what they had been requesting, that staff put into this Phase Three of the plan. I also note that OLR has been very clear about their concern around the cumulative impact of increased density in the Canby Corridor on the services that the city provides within the corridor, everything from parks and community centers to fire service and police services, libraries, senior centers, even down to coffee shops. I remember lots of meetings where people talked about the need for very local, local serving retail along the corridor. So I think that that's something we need to watch as a council and as a city in terms of making sure that the, as this corridor becomes more and more densely developed, that the very important needs of the community in terms of both the physical services and the, and the park and recreation and social services are commensurately developed in that corridor, but happy to have moved this.
Thanks, Councillor Carr, and that's it for, looks like debate, so we'll pull it over to the voting queue. And I'll ask the folks to queue that up, thank you. And the clerks could pull up that result, that has passed with none in opposition. Thanks, council. We are on the fourth and final item. CD1 rezoning at 475740 Canby Street, and I'm just going to ask right now if anybody has a conflict of interest? And I don't hear any, so we're going to ask the clerk to read the application again at council, we do have speakers on this, so we will automatically see the presentation, unless, of course, we have a motion to waive it, but I don't hear one. So let's go for the clerks.
This is an application by Polygon Oak Ridge Development Limited to rezon 5740 Canby Street from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit a mixed-use development, including a 14-story residential tower containing 80 secured market rental units and a 27-story residential tower containing 133 strata units, both with partial rooftop stories for common amenity spaces. The two towers are situated atop a shared four-story podium containing ground-floor commercial space, a commercial office space, and 1,347.1 square meters of nonprofit organization hub space, which is to be delivered turnkey to the city. A maximum building height of 84.8 meters and a floor-space ratio of 8.33 are proposed. The general manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Eleven pieces in support and two pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received... represents all correspondence received up to 4:30 today.
Thanks so much. Great. So 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445, pound to get on the list. And we have Scott Erdman from the Major Projects Department, I guess, I guess it's his department, to lead us through the presentation.
Hi there. I just want to double check first that you can see the presentation on your screen.
We can, and it's on the public screen as well. So we're good to go.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Scott Erdman, and I am the rezoning planner from the rezoning center for this rezoning application at 5740 Canby Street. The site is located in the Oakridge neighborhood at the southeast corner of Canby Street and West 41st Avenue, as seen on the map highlighted in red. It is directly across the street to the east from Oakridge Center and the Oakridge 41st Avenue Canada Line Station. It is currently developed with two low-rise commercial buildings with surface parking, and there are no residential tenants on site. There are multiple new mid-rise mixed-use buildings along 41st Avenue that have been recently approved or built, including a six-story residential building just across the lane to the east. Detached houses are on neighboring side streets, and Columbia Park is one block away to the east. The site is zoned C2 for commercial development and is shown in red on the map. North and south of the site, lots are also zoned C2, whereas new CD1 zones for mid-rise development have been approved in recent years along 41st Avenue. The neighboring residential side streets consist of RS1 zoning. To the east, directly across the lane, is a rezoning application for 441 to 475 West 42nd Avenue, which you just heard about tonight prior to this presentation. That site is shown in yellow on the map. The site is located within the catchment of Van Horn Elementary School and Eric Hambur Secondary School. According to the Vancouver School Board's 2019 Draft Long Range Facilities Plan, capacity exists at both schools, both for present day and for forecasted enrollment. The site is well-served by transit, being located at the same intersection as the Oakridge 41st Avenue Canada Line Station and the new R4 Rapid Bus Service along 41st Avenue. This site is within the Canby corridor plan, which was approved by council in May 2018. The intent of the plan is to guide and enable positive change in the Canby corridor over 30 years, and includes a public benefit strategy and public realm plan to help guide new development. As mentioned in the previous presentation, this site is located within the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre, one of 17 in the metro Vancouver region, and it represents one of the most significant concentrations of urban uses and density in the corridor and the region. This site is at the very center of the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre, and under the Canby corridor plan, is anticipated to develop over time into a highly urban place with a variety of mixed uses, vibrant street life, and dynamic new public spaces. At the heart of the Oakridge MTC are the alphabet blocks, A through H, along Canby Street, as shown on the map, each with site-specific height limits and with density based on urban design performance. The plan identifies this site as Area E in the plan and provides direction for future development to have active commercial uses at grade, a commercial podium, and two towers on top, with the higher tower up to 278 feet height. Sites A through H are all expected to deliver onsite amenities to service growth in the MTC area. These amenities are to be negotiated as part of the rezoning process and to include one or more of the following options: nonprofit office space, a youth center, childcare facilities, and artist studios. All amenities are to be delivered turnkey to the city. This diagram illustrates the scale of development anticipated by the plan for this site. A major tower on the south end of the block can be considered up to 278 feet high for residential uses, and a minor tower on the north end, up to 120 feet, or up to 150 feet if setbacks are included, for either commercial or secured market rental uses. A four-story commercial podium with at-grade retail and services is expected. An additional partial story for common rooftop amenities can be considered under the plan's built-form guidelines. The proposal before you tonight was received in April 2019 and is for a mixed-use development for two towers atop a shared podium. Processing time was extended for negotiation of the onsite in-kind amenity. And as this is one of the first applications in the MTC area, additional time was needed for staff review and coordination of feedback. A 27-story tower at 278 feet with 133 strata units is proposed for the south end, and a 14-story tower at 148 feet with 80 secured market rental units is proposed for the north end. Rooftop common amenity spaces are proposed for both towers, in addition to shared outdoor amenity space on the podium rooftop. Both the strata and rental towers exceed the 35% minimum requirement under the city's family room policy. The towers sit atop a four-story commercial podium and includes ground floor retail with office space above. A mid-block plaza is also proposed to provide seating, landscaping, and gathering spaces to enhance the public realm. Four levels of underground parking and an FSR of 8.33 are proposed. The community amenity offered in this application is 14,500 square feet of nonprofit organization office space to be delivered turnkey to the city. Regarding the affordability of the proposed rental building, this table shows the market rates for newer buildings in Vancouver's west side, as shown in the left columns in green. The market rental units provide a more affordable housing alternative to homeownership for more than half of Vancouver's population, and they contribute to city initiatives, including creating diverse, sustainable, and varied communities. A pre-application and city-hosted open house were both held as in-person events prior to COVID-19. The city-led open house took place in June 2019 and was attended by approximately 30 people. Staff have received a total of seven responses for this application. Feedback included support for the proposed height, density, and building design, for the nonprofit office space, community amenity, and for the inclusion of rental housing. Concerns included comments regarding the affordability of the housing, for the height and density of the proposal, and that too much parking was proposed. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that the proposal meets the intents of the Canby corridor plan for this site. Conditions have been included in Appendix B to further improve the design development of the proposal. This application generates a variety of public benefits. This includes an in-kind community amenity contribution in the form of 14,500 square feet of nonprofit organization office space to be delivered turnkey to the city for a multi-tenant NPO hub. This hub space will include affordable office and programming space for social and cultural NPOs, and is located in the commercial podium with some visibility at the street level. The value of this NPO hub is 12 million. In addition, the applicant will also be required to pay DCLs and provide a public art contribution, bringing the total value of the public benefits offering for this project to just over 20 million. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, if approved, this project would generate over 750 off-site and onsite construction jobs, contributing to Vancouver's post-COVID economic recovery. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Canby corridor plan, and the proposed height, density, form, and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated in the plan for this location. This proposal includes both strata and secured rental housing, and a public benefits package valued at just over 20 million, which includes a nonprofit office hub delivered turnkey to the city. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Great. Thanks so much. I'm going to move to the applicant team now. And I see there's no presentation listed, but is there anything you'd like to say to council or just answer questions?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just answer questions. I also have, I'm Brady Enlott of Architect for the Project. I also have Chris Ho, the Development VP of Development from Polygon, yeah.
Thank you so much. So next, we move to questions from council to staff. And this is the only time, again, council, that you have an opportunity to ask applicants' questions. I have councillor Boyle. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a couple of questions to the applicant. And the first is, can you just remind us or speak to the shared amenity space for residents in the building? And my question specifically around it is, are the outdoor, is the outdoor amenity space shared between residents of the strata tower and the rental tower?
Certainly, councillor Boyle. The Level 5 rooftop is a shared amenity for both the market and the rental buildings. In addition to that, there is indoor space, sky lounges for both the rental building on the 15th floor, the rooftop, and the 27th floor for the, 28th floor for the, for the market building, which in both of those spaces have adjoining outdoor access as well.
Okay, so those two are for the residents in each of the towers, but the shared outdoor space between the two will, will be accessible for residents of both towers?
Correct.
Okay, great. And my second question is around parking. It seems like a lot of parking to me for a location right across from the Canada Line. And so I'd just be interested to hear as we look at, at tackling parking maximums and minimums, if, why that amount was, was landed at for you as an applicant?
Certainly. As part of the traffic demand management strategy and review, we're looking at a reduced parking count down from the city policy requested amounts. And so we arrived at this with ourselves in the city. And I'm not sure if further reductions will be sought by the applicant, if the option was available or not.
Okay. Does the parking also get split? Forgive me if this was in the report and I'm mixing up all the reading we did this week, but the number of parking stalls be spread between the rental and strata? Or do you imagine they will mostly be allocated and sold with strata units?
As part of the transit demands, so the traffic demand study and the report that was submitted with that, it's all broken down in there. The parking is shared below, and I believe as part of that analysis, that the portion of rental and the portion of market was, was distributed amongst the different uses.
Relative to how many units of each there are?
Yes. Chris, can, did you, did you want to weigh in on that as well?
Yeah, thanks, Brady. Yes, that's exactly correct. So the TDM addressed the specific uses and the specific requirements of parking for each of the specific uses.
Okay, okay. That's all for me. Thanks. Thanks for those answers.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, just one question for the applicant. Are these residential buildings going to be pet-friendly?
I'm happy to announce that we did confirm with the, the applicant that they will be pet-friendly and encouraged.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. That's it for questions. So now we're moving to the public. We do have a couple folks listed to speak to this. Let's check my list here. The first speaker is, yeah, we have Nathan Davidovich. Please go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you very much for hearing me. Let me start by reading page 13 of the report under Item 6, Transportation and Parking. As recommended in the Canby corridor plan and coordinated with TransLink, relocation of the existing emergency exit for the Oakridge 41st Avenue Station on the east side of Canby Street is proposed as part of this development. Well, as everybody knows, TransLink has nothing to do with rail transit. SNC-Lavland has a contract till 2040, and so this is a mistake again by the staff of trying to say that TransLink is in charge or anything like that, which it's not. We need another entrance to the Oakridge Station from the east side of Canby Street. It could be constructed now, or maybe we'll have to wait way longer. It took 21 years to wait to get the entrance at Granville Station from Dansmere Street. And Canada Line was already open in 2009, so now we are into 12 years. By rebuilding the emergency exit, we can do it now. It will help all the new buildings on the east side of Canby Street and save time and potential accident by people crossing Canby Street to the station. There's over 5,000 people a day that cross there now, and it potentially could go up to about 10,000 people after all these new buildings are being constructed. The Canada Line, as everybody knows, was underbuilt, and they keep wasting our money. You know, the line to the airport is running at full capacity, like the airport, while the airport passenger count is down by 85%. They're running empty trains to the airport and wasting our money. But that's what they do. You know, we need more elevators to take you right down to the platform where you, you know, the whole station has to be rebuilt. If, you know, we're going to have an extra 10,000 people moving into the area, and how are you going to handle all those people?
Mr. Davidovich, just wondering how you feel about this particular proposal?
Well, I'm feeling very bad about this emergency exit and not having more entrances and exits, not just at this station, but all the Canada Line stations. It's completely, you know, inferior stations to, to, like yourself, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned London, England many times, that you were there for four years or whatever. And you know how nice stations they have in London, England. And our stations are way, way inferior. There is just, it's just no comparison, even to stations in Ottawa. And I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's really tragedy that, that what happened is the Canada Line with SNC and the three P arrangements, the former councils and governments and so forth. It's, things are not getting better. Things are going to get worse and worse as time goes by. And, 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 you know, I don't know. I mean, it's not this council's fault, it's previous councils, previous governments that negotiated this deal with SNC-Lavland. And I don't know what could be done, except, well, doing, I mean, I know that that this new building, we can put in a proper entrance from the east side. It will actually complement this building. It will get more people to use the building to go through it to the, to the station. And by just keeping this as an emergency exit, it's a big, big mistake. Now, again, I presume that, that, that... Yeah, the property, I mean, the Development Board, or the, I mean, is in charge and if these islands don't come to council, unless council asks, then they'll come and report what's happening.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we do have a question from Counselor Hardwick though. So just hold on a second. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Trying to distill down from that, Mr. Davidovich. The question is about an entrance to the Canada Line Station and how that could be integrated into this particular development. Is that your question? Is that's what you're getting at?
Yes, I mean, yes, we do want more entrances to all the stations because one is not enough. This particular one is going to be like very, very busy. It's going to be twice as many people going to go through these stations after all these high rises going to be built in the area. The population is going to increase.
Focus on this one high rise? Just...
No, not just this one. But I mean, if you take all of them, you know, you're going to get...
We're not talking about all of them. We're talking about this one. And I'm trying to focus back on, on side.
This, this one is, is a problem because the developer took the, his advice from TransLink instead of taking the advice from other people who know about rapid rail transit. And they would have told him that it would make sense to have an entrance from the east side. And we also need an entrance from the north side as well. But, you know, right now it's only one entrance.
Okay.
You know, and the station is...
Thank you, thank you. Look, I'm just trying to get this down so I can ask a targeted question of staff to determine if, if, you know, how much has, this has been thought through? Because it is a valid observation that, that there needs to be more thoughtful integration between the housing form and the transportation. So thank you very much, Mr. Davidovich, and keep it up. Thank you.
Mayor Stewart? I think maybe you're on mute, Mayor Stewart?
Seven times. Sorry about that. And Tracy Moyer, you're there and up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
I am, thank you. Good evening again, members of council. Again, Tracy Moyer, Chair of OLR or Oakridge-Lingera Area Residence. I wanted just to quickly thank Counselor Carr for providing more background and history about OLR during the last item. It is a difficult challenge to summarize all of OLR's past actions and activities regarding municipal affairs. Under Canby Corridor Plan Phase 2, this site, which you're deciding upon tonight for this item, was contemplated for 12 or perhaps up to 16 stories. Before you today is a significantly bigger, taller, more massive project increased under Phase 3 planning. The question is, does the Canby Corridor Plan meet a standard to provide adequate affordability or community amenity to warrant a much bigger development than it would have been under Phase 2? Using the phase terms I described in my last speech, I remind the council that a tower project in Phase 3, which as we see tonight, can be directly behind, next door in fact, as we see tonight. And that requires 20% below-market rental when it's to be a rental project or 30% social housing when it's to be a strata project. This proposed project's nonprofit office space is needed in our area. In fact, it's exciting. But the question is, given that the fact that the additional density attainable under the reopening of Phase 2, under the guise of housing affordability and the need for more community amenities, is, is 14,500 square feet sufficient for the nonprofit office space? If I had done my math correctly, 15%, 1.5% of the FSR of this proposed project would be the nonprofit office space. This is the only community amenity from this project. We therefore propose, or oppose, we therefore oppose this proposal, given it should provide relatively more than the Phase 3 smaller developments behind. I would like to ask for a cartoon to be shown now, please. I would like to describe it for those with only audio. It is a family circus cartoon with dad offering his son a cookie, asking, "What is the magic word to get what you want?" And the son is supposed to say, "Please." The cartoon here has been altered. The dad has the words "City Hall" on his shirt. And instead, he says, "What is the magic phrase to get what you want?" And the son replies, "I'm a real estate developer." We feel there is truth to this, given the discrepancy between affordable housing and amenity requirements between Phase 2 sites already held in, held by developers during the Canby Corridor planning process versus the usually family-owned houses in the Phase 3 area. We are also interested in knowing if this site has contamination from a former gas station, which was located directly across 41st to the north. The referral reports Appendix B under Environmental Contamination, Section 21, Section 20, sorry, 2.18, 2.18 states, if applicable, and then it goes on to list what will be needed. We would like to know if this site is contaminated. And if it is, how will it be addressed? When in process is it addressed? And when is the renovation plan required? OLR has had the understanding previously that environmental contamination is to be addressed at the rezoning stage. And then finally, given the last speaker's speech and the question, I hope I get a question about ingress and egress from our Canada Line Station at 41st. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Thank you so much. Just checking here. And Counselor Hardwick, you have up to five minutes for questions for the speaker.
Thank you very much. Well, based on the last, the second to last speaker and the speaker and discussion around transportation, the Canada Line, and this proposed development, could you, do you have any comments on ingress and egress on this proposal?
Counsel, I don't know how many years back, probably at the time of the Canby, the Oakridge Mall rezoning. We're on record to say that it's not just about faster trains or more trains or longer platforms. The biggest issue is ingress and egress out of the stations. Based on our lobbying, sometimes which is successful, and here's one example. It is our understanding, the last time this is, we have been informed about this, is that the, at 41st and Canby, the northwest corner, for those of you that know the neighborhood, there's a bank in the lobby there. I think it's TD Canada Trust. So the northwest corner, when that gets redeveloped, there's supposed to be an additional ingress/egress at that site, which we welcome. We think we need them in all four corners, but at least two is better than one. The Oakridge Mall development, redevelopment had offered a paltry, I don't know how many few hundred thousand dollars to put in, I think some more turnstiles and something, I think another escalator. But it just, that doesn't address it. You need more holes in the ground to get people in and out. At some point, it does become a safety issue if there's too many people there. Regarding the emergency exits, same thing. We need additional emergency exits and as more people are going to be taking the Canada Line. So yes, we really hope that you're going to talk to staff about that to ensure whatever emergency exits get removed. My understanding, there's currently two of them at that, near that intersection. One on the Boulevard, one in front of 54, 5740. But we also need more. So please, if the staff, or maybe you nudge the staff and get them to consider that in future rezonings at this intersection. Thank you very much. Oh, and Counselor Hardwick, thank you for picking up on my request for the question.
I have one more request of you. Can I have a copy of that cartoon?
Oh, you guys didn't see it?
We did.
Well, I saw it. I just, I'm sure that all of council would love to have that cartoon distributed. Thank, that would be great.
Counselor Hardwick, I'm happy to send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carr, up to five minutes for questions for the speaker.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Moyer, I believe you were talking about the inadequacy of 14,500 square feet for nonprofit office space as, so the inadequacy in terms of the public benefit. But I didn't quite capture what your, what would be adequate from your point of view in terms of public amenities in order to justify this heightened density.
Thanks, Counselor Carr. A weighted average, looking at how much of this development is strata versus rental in the towers and whatever that percentage is. Then comparing it with Phase 3, for example, the project you guys just approved, which is rental, which is 20%, and also incorporating the 30% rental. So whatever that number is, that's the amount of community many that should be contributed by this project. And it's, I suggest too late now to do anything in terms of floor space readjustments. But then let that be a cash contribution. So however many millions of dollars is that difference? Let me go through the calculation again. Let's just say it was a 50/50 split in this building between strata, in this project between strata and rental. Then I would say, make it 25% contribution for CACs in terms of what the FSR is. I can't do the math in my head on the fly. So a weighted average of the proportions of how much housing, the types of housing on the site on Canby, compare it with 30% social housing, if it's a strata environment in Phase 3, or else 20% below-market rental, if it's in a below-market rental. Do the calculation. And, and that is what should be contributed at a minimum from this particular proposal. I would suggest it should be even higher because it's a bigger project, more opportunity for more amenity. So I wish I could do the numbers fast enough for you. I can't.
Okay, I can ask staff about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. So thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you coming in this evening. I want to do my first call for speakers. 1-833-353-8610, 1061445 pound to get on the list. Clerks, do we have anybody else to speak to this item?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. We have no one on the line for this item.
Thanks. I'm going to call it out again. The phone number, 1-833-353-8610. That's to get on and that number is on Twitter and on live stream. I'll check again, clerks, if we have...
None.
Anybody happen to slide into that 15 seconds?
None, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, and I'll call the third and final time and then wait for five minutes. So this is the third call for speakers. It is 9:23, and so council will come back at 9:28 to finish off this item. Thanks so much. We'll see you in five. I'm just going to check and see if anybody else is on the line.
I believe not. This is the clerk here. I believe not.
Okay.
And yes, I'm getting a confirmation, no.
Great, okay, thanks so much. So we're going to close the speakers' list because we've made our three calls and we're going to close our public comments and move on. Just asking, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Yes, your mayor. Chris Ho again with Polygon. Our site received our certificate of clearance from the provincial government in regards to the contamination. So we are clear. That was obtained through the previous site owners to the North Imperial Oil.
Okay, thanks so much. Anything else?
Nope, that's good.
Okay, thanks. Any closing comments from staff?
No closing comments from staff. Thank you.
Thanks, council. Any questions? Counselor Hardwick, up to five. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to follow up on questions that came out of the two speakers that we heard in respect of ingress and egress and additional access to transit and the Canada Line from this location. Staff, I know it's touched on in the report, but can you please elaborate and respond to the questions that came up from the speakers?
If you could be a little more specific, Counselor Hardwick. I think it's...
Yeah, I was specific. It's about transportation. It's about the Canada Line. It's about ingress and egress. It's about access.
It's a lot of stuff.
Well, it's in the transportation part of the report, and I'm asking for... Well, it's in the transportation part of the report, and I'm asking for a response and elaboration from staff. Thank you.
Do your best, staff.
Thank you, Councilor Hardwick. So I can confirm that the Oakridge 41st Avenue Canada Line Station was designed with the idea of an additional secondary entrance to be built in the future. However, that second entrance wasn't envisioned to be this side of the street, but rather a second entrance is anticipated for the northwest corner of this intersection. So staff anticipate that any future development that will come forward at that corner will be required to provide a secondary entrance to the Canada Line Station.
So just thinking about this, so we're on, we're on the southeast corner, and we're saying then kitty corner on the northwest corner is where this would be taking place.
That's correct, councillor. That's correct.
Okay, and so that's it. There's no provision, there's no alternative to contemplate again. We're looking at considerable density, notwithstanding what's across the street on the southwest corner, what's going in over there. So we're saying it's out of the question in terms of this location to be looking at any additional access. And we're just going to say it's enough to have it on the northwest corner. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Carr, up to five.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, just to staff, just a follow up to Council Hardwick's question. Sort of what level of development or density in the area would trigger that second entrance at the northwest corner?
Thank you, Councilor Carr. So that kind of discussion would be coordinated between our colleagues at engineering and with TransLink. However, the plan already anticipates a second entrance at that corner, which you'll see in the plan. It's labeled as Area A. So at the point in time that staff receive a future rezoning application for Area A, that's when those discussions will take place in order to secure that second entrance.
Okay, so it has to be in a different location for that to be triggered in the Area A location? I'm wondering what or how you ended up landing on the particular size and value of the amenity space, which is a nonprofit office space. So what is it, you know, was it, you know, a certain number of units or value to the development? What was the process to determine that particular benefit in this project or amenity?
Sure. Thank you, Councilor Carr. So as part of this rezoning application, the applicant was required to submit a pro forma, which outlines the expected financial performance of their application. And this project has a multitude of components, including job space, rental housing, and strata. They were required by the Canby Plan to propose an onsite community amenity. And as you noted, in this case, it's nonprofit office space. So as part of the application review, staff engage in detailed discussions with the applicant team to review those numbers in the pro forma. And there's some back and forth as staff, as staff work with the applicant team to secure the amount of space that can be leveraged by a development of the scale. And so in this case, it was deemed that a nonprofit office hub was appropriate for this location, and that this 14,500 square feet staff and applicant feel is the, is the amount of space that this project's financial performance generates.
Yeah. I'm curious as to the process of determining that particular public amenity. Did you have discussions with the community, with OLR, for example, at whose suggestion was the nonprofit space? And is there an anticipated sort of set of users for that nonprofit office space that you had in mind when that came up as a, as a potential amenity?
So as part of the development of the Canby Corridor Plan, as noted in my presentation, these blocks were all anticipated to deliver an onsite amenity. As part of the policy development, staff developed a menu, if you will, of options that applicants can select from for priority amenities to be landed at these locations. And from that list of options, one of which was the nonprofit office space hub, and then the others included childcare, a youth center, and artist studios. As part of the inquiry, review process, and coordination, staff worked with the applicant to determine what's the best amenity that is appropriate for this site. And with multiple applications being reviewed concurrently, staff makes sure that there is a balance of onsite amenities so that we don't get a, say, unnecessary duplication.
And any consultation with the sort of surrounding community or representative groups like OLR about that? I think it's a very interesting process. I hadn't heard about the process before. So in terms of either developing the list or in the case of the process going through with this particular applicant, the potential to have that kind of discussion with the community and their priorities?
Yeah, so this, this menu of options for applicants to choose from for these sites, that work and that selection was done as part of the policy development under Phase Three of the Canby Corridor Plan. So the public would have had opportunities to weigh in on what are their priorities for their neighborhood. And then for this application specifically, the applicants did go out with a pre-application open house in which the idea of the nonprofit office hub was proposed to the neighborhood.
Thanks. I'm going to have to cut you off there. We're well over the five minutes, and I'm going to move to Council Weave.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that questioning. The current square footage, the upzone is going to be close to 200,000 square feet, and at 20 million for the amenity contribution, that's closer to $100 a square foot. Recognizing that in Phase Two, it talks about any building from six to 10 would be 112, and buildings higher than that would have a higher square footage. So I'm just wondering how we've calculated closer to $100 a square foot when buildings of a smaller size are getting us a larger amount of amenities? And so just wondering how we're calculating that land lift? I know you said it's a negotiated amount, but how is it less than what we typically see for a six to 10-story building in the area?
Hi, Councilor Cynthia Law from the Rezoning Centre. As we evaluate this site, there's a number of amenities. As we spoke about the rental on the site as well as the nonprofit office space, so it's not specifically due to the amount of floor area, but it's negotiated and in consideration of the onsite public benefits.
Okay, so there's, I mean, obviously the strata tower is significant, but you're saying that the amenity space calculated in the rental tower would be kind of removed from the CAC calculation, or that was actually seen as an amenity?
Sorry, the amenity being the nonprofit office hub, which is being delivered turnkey to the city.
Yeah, but, and then the rental housing?
And the rental housing, correct.
Okay. Thanks. That was my only question.
Okay, thanks. I don't see any other questions, so if I can have somebody move the motion, the recommendation? Thank you, Councilor Dejanova. Do we have a secondary? Secondary?
Councilor Boyle.
Council Boyle, thank you. So we're on to the main queue now for debate and discussion. Council Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I'd send in a referral motion. The idea is to refer this back to staff until they give us their report on affordable, housing affordability in the Canby Corridor, which I understand should be coming soon. If you just look at this project here, we have 80 expensive rentals. We have 133 expensive condos. No one can live there unless they're earning over 72K. If we look at all the A, B, C, D, E, H, up to H lots, it's over 1,000 expensive units with only the 29 units that we just voted for at 30 to 80K. 29 out of 1,000. As I've said before, we're building an elite community in the Canby Corridor, and I don't want to be part of that. If we look at the public benefits summary in the appendix of this referral report, of over 11,000 units, less than 2% are at hills, which is around 50,000. We have the median renter in the city, the median renter household is only making 55,000. If we keep doing this, these massive rezonings, before we get the affordability, we're not going to have any land left to rezone. So I think we should be referring this back until we get a report, and then maybe we can get a bit more affordability out of it.
Second.
Okay, we're on a queue. Council Dejanova, up to five minutes to debate this amendment, this referral motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a point of information first.
Okay.
And the point of information is through you to city staff as to whether or not this currently meets the policy. I mean, I understand, I have read the report, Mr. Mayor, but before I proceed otherwise, I would, I would need to know if that were the case.
Okay, so perhaps somebody in the staff team can answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cynthia Law from the Rezoning Centre. Yes, this application does meet the policy.
Okay.
So my understanding and point of information, perhaps to, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if I asked the mover of the motion, is, is this suggesting that we wait for new policy that has not yet become approved to come to council?
Probably mover of the motion, I imagine, or the amendment.
Well, it's through you. It's for you.
Yep, so
I just wanted to make sure you got a chance to direct the question.
Sure. Council Swanson then.
So a little while back, we passed a motion asking staff to look at affordability in the Canby Corridor. So this referral merely says, let's refer this rezoning application back to the staff until after they bring us that report.
Okay, Council Dejanova, you still have about a three and a half minutes?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. And a question to, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, is, did the applicant begin their application for this before that motion came forward?
Staff?
Yes, this applicant did make their application before that motion was approved.
Okay. And, and then, Mr. Mayor, what I would ask you is just a point of information. I'm just wondering then, considering the public hearing that we're in right now, I understand that we're supposed to be judging the application based on the policy that we currently have, not policy that's coming back to council, as you reminded us at the beginning of the hearing. So I'm just wondering if that, if that's something we should or shouldn't be considering right now?
Well, I can leave that up to council to decide what they want to. I did check with legal, though, when this, this referral, this referral motion is in order.
Okay. Well, I wasn't asking if it was out of order. I was asking as to whether or not we were debating policy here or this motion. Right now, this, or right now, the staff recommendations fit within the policy that we have. So I understand if something came back, council were to approve that, that would become new policy. But I certainly don't want to send a message to applicants who are either doing, you know, affordable rental, non-market housing, housing at shelter rate, not to come forward because council may move a policy in the meantime, and then hold them to that policy when they get there. I'm just concerned about the unintended consequences here, similar to the unintended consequences I spoke about when, you know, there was concern about what council could or could not do. You know, in directing owners, landowners, as to what they should do with their property, if that was to build townhouses or a 13,000-square-foot mansion. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this referral. And as this does currently meet the policy, that being said, I'm excited to staff coming back, you know, with the work on that, just as we're all looking forward to a lot of work coming back on childcare and other matters. And hopefully, we can, you know, in my opinion, that will be the right time to consider the policy after it's passed and is included in the, in the policy report that's before us. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any other speakers on this amendment. Oh, there's Council Hardwick. Go ahead, Council Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to speak in support of Council Swanson's amendment. There, there, Megan, I've been thinking very carefully about this, and, and, you know, it's bookending what we started with this morning with the, with the assessment roles, and considering the impact that the exponential land lift, it's not just the one location, it's the exponential land lift that has come cumulatively through all of this. And I look back at, at the Oakridge Phase One, Phase Two. I was there in 2010 when the first part of this was going through, and I guess we should have anticipated what the outcomes would have been, but we, we didn't. And this is one of the tricks with policies that do need to be updated and, as we've said before, recalibrated as we do start to see the impacts, especially of this, this widespread cumulative rezoning. So I just, as, as Council Swanson said, I don't want to be part of something that is, is continuing to exacerbate the problem. And I think this is the right thing to do, and so I will support Council Swanson's amendment.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll call a vote on this referral amendment. We need Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor Kirby Young? There we go. Have the clerks pull that up, please, on the screen. That has failed with Councilors Kirby Young, Bly, Domino Boyle, Weave, Fry, Dejanova, and myself in opposition.
Can we see that, please?
Yeah, I've asked clerks to pull it up. Hey, clerks, we just get the City of Vancouver logo on the screen. We'll just wait, counsel, before we move on.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor. I haven't seen any of the voting screens displayed today at all, only the City of Vancouver logo.
That's right, and I did send it out to clerks earlier about that.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. It is showing on the screen in the chamber. But I guess it's, it's not making it to the public screen?
It's not. We see you now on the public screen.
And
There we go.
You got it? Okay.
Yeah, perfect. And it's clearer than usual, so that's good. But there's the vote, counsel. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, so we're back to the main queue. Council Swanson, anything else? You have about three minutes.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'm going to call a vote on this, on this recommendation. And if the clerks can pull up that vote, which is completed, and that has passed council with Councilors Hardwick, Swanson, and Carr in opposition. Okay, council, so we're at 9:49, and that is it for this very long day. If we can have somebody Thank you very much. Most, thank you. A secondary?
Oh, nicely done.
So that's, that's a secondary, Council Hardwick?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. And so we'll be commuting tomorrow morning in the Standing Committee at 9:30. So all those in favor of adjourning, say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, say nay. And we're adjourned. Thanks very much, counsel. Thank you, clerks, for your very long day and also the staff for all your work. So we'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks, clerks. Thanks, staffs.
Yep. Thanks, staff.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.